Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to our October 18th, 2017 meeting of the Rockville Center Board of Education. I'd ask everybody to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the lord of saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can everybody hear me in the back? Speak into the mic. I'd just like to acknowledge Mrs. McNulty is actually stuck at work, so she'll be joining us later. I just want to, you know, let everybody know that's why she's not here. In the event of emergency, I'd like just to point out the two exit doors. If you leave the exit and follow the signs in the hallway to the exterior exit doors, that'll be your safe way out of the building if we do have an emergency. All right, Dr. Johnson, we'll move right on to our students.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have a number of recognitions and introductions, so I, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Murphy to do the honors. John?
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Board members, community, tonight's one of those great nights that we get to celebrate excellence on a variety of different fronts. The first of which is every student's favorite event in their high school career, taking the PSAT and SAT exams. Every October, 1.6 million juniors in over 20,000 high schools take the PSAT. And of those, the top 3% of all scores are recognized by the National Merit Scholarship by, as commended scholars. Of those, the top 1% are chosen as National Merit semifinalists. The National Commended Scholars receive recognition in September. Those semifinalists also receive recognition but are still in the process of the award ceremony through which they can then become National Merit Scholarships and in April be eligible for scholarship money. So, we're very fortunate to have five such recipients at Southside, which is a large number for us relative to past years. So first, I'd like to recognize three students who received letters of commendation for the National Merit as being among the top 3% nationally, and those students are Spencer Kirsch, Luke Shannon, and Alexandra Valenti. Okay, the photo op is very important. You want to, John, you want everyone together?
I'd like to invite all the board members up and Dr. Johnson for a picture. You don't want to go there, that's fine, but I'd invite you. Come on up. Come on up. We have to push the stable out. Yeah, right. Moving around.
While I don't have a fancy card, I'd like to recognize the semifinalists who are still in the process of the National Merit Scholarship Program and are still eligible to become finalists. So, congratulations in transit, Matthew Trenchney and Peter Weiss. But wait, there's more. It is also at this time of the year that we'd like to recognize and acknowledge other student leaders. These are our elected student leaders who are not just example setters but are pivotal in setting the right tone and setting the right example for their fellow classmates. And it's been a pleasure to work with these, especially the seniors who I've had the pleasure of working with for any number of years. There'll be two groups we'll call up separately. The first will be SGA, or Student Government Association Officers. Lily Cole sends her regards and regrets. She couldn't make it. She had an unavoidable commitment that she couldn't miss. But this year's SGA president is Ms. Lily Cole. First Vice President, Nadia Tavella. That was a delay. I thought you weren't here. Good, thank you. Second Vice President, Brandon Astor. And Treasurer, Olivia Waterson. These are the individual class presidents who, again, it's not their primary concern, but I'd like to thank them so far for their spirited leadership as well as their advice in this upcoming Spirit Week. So it's one of the several things that they're responsible for in terms of setting the climate and tone for the building. So for that, thank you. Please welcome the senior class president, Ms. Julia Lanzalata. Junior class president, Lauren Thomas. Sophomore class president, Savannah May. And freshman class president, Emilio Grillo.
My turn. I'm not going to let you speak anymore. It's my turn. Right, okay.
Okay, is that what you said? I'm sorry.
Yeah. You know, while we are on the subject of both service and leadership, it's really a pleasure on my part to talk a little bit about the Board of Education and the people who represent us here on the Board of Education. When it comes to service, you need to understand how, and leadership, how this five-member board in fact represents the families in this community, the children, the parents. And at the end of the day, they are the leaders who in fact assist us and make those very, very important decisions, quite frankly, that are going to make this and continue to make this the outstanding school district that has become. They don't get paid. This is volunteer work. They spend hours and hours with the assignments that are sent home from not just my office but from all of the offices in the school district, reviewing, thinking through all of the different ideas that may in fact make the life for our students here at Southside High School and in the entire district better. And we have each year an opportunity to thank them for the work that they do. They, just from a very personal point of view, you have to get to know them a little bit. I invite people to come to the Board of Meeting so they get to know what dedication is all about. These people really worry about your children. They worry about what happens to the buildings. They worry about what happens in this community. And at the end of the day, they need to work, all five of them, with one another and with us on, in fact, developing policies and regulations which make the life of everybody in this community better. They do it without looking for thanks from anybody. And every once in a while, it's a wonderful opportunity for us to say thank you for the service and the leadership that you provide to this community. So, thank you. So, no pun intended, but on that note, I would like to ask Dr. Zouart to please introduce our students here at Southside.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Thank you, Board of Education. Dr. Friling, you can get the choir situated as I'm...
If the board members and the students sit in front of the stage?
Sure, sure.
Nope.
Sure, let's move bodies around while I'm talking. So everybody, while we're getting organized here, I wanted to tell you about an author I discovered. You can go right in front of me, it's okay. They can still hear me. I wanted to tell everybody about an author I discovered over the summer. Dr. Brené Brown is a research professor at the University of Houston Graduate College of Social Work. She studied and written about courage, vulnerability, empathy, and shame. Dr. Brown's research focuses on authentic leadership and wholeheartedness in families, schools, and organizations. She has written that vulnerability, the willingness to be all-in even when you know it can mean failing and hurting, vulnerability is brave. Her latest book is entitled, "Braving the Wilderness: The Quest for True Belonging and the Courage to Stand Alone." And her research on that book showed that paradoxically, to truly belong to something, one must have the courage to stand alone. When I heard this, I heard her interviewed on public radio over the summer, I was struck by the connection between that and performing musicians. Because performing music involves belonging to the ensemble, but at the same time, you have to know your music so well that you can perform it solo. When you listen to these young men and women sing in a few moments, please realize that they need to have the confidence and the independence to sing alone, and only then can they use their critical thinking skills to figure out how does their part fit into the whole. They must have the humility to blend their voice rather than make it stand out, of course, according to the will of the music and the conductor, but it takes humility. And anybody that gets up, you all know this, in front of an audience, to perform makes yourself vulnerable. And according to Dr. Brown, then, they exhibit courage by doing so. I think that we as educators and educational leaders, Board of Education, District Administration, we can all learn from this. Sometimes, in order to belong, we decide to go along with the prevailing trend or philosophy, but often, we need to be brave enough to set ourselves apart, to have the courage to make decisions that are not easy or not popular or contrary to convention. And I know that our board members often make themselves vulnerable. They allow themselves to be criticized precisely because they are brave and exhibit courage and empathy, all in the service of the children in this community. I'm grateful that as long as I've been here, and I expect long before I got here, the board members in Rockville Center have valued educating the whole child and have valued children expressing themselves through visual art and performing music. So tonight, we recognize our board. We say thank you for your courage. Thank you for your commitment. Thank you for braving the wilderness and creating the sense that we all belong to something very special. We say thank you in the best way we know how, by performing music for you. Dr. Friling and the chamber singers.
If you squeeze together, you might get in the picture. Lauren, if they squeeze? But squeeze together?
I just commented, ladies and gentlemen. I just told Dr. Friling, we don't have to wait till the end of time. I think we just heard the angels singing.
For those of you who are still here, by the way, we are going to break for a few moments. We have coffee and cake outside. Thanks to the PTA who have been very, very generous in providing it to us. So, please join us outside for a little refreshment.
All right, I'd like to get, you know, get started again. I'd like, on behalf of the entire board, I'd like to thank the PTA for what they've done for us out there and what they do for us on a regular basis. Without the PTA, this school district would not be able to function. You know, they are the core, the backbone of the school district, and we really appreciate everything you do to make our jobs easier. Over the break, I met a young man, Jason, who'd like to speak, to address the board, and I'd like to give him this opportunity, even though it's a little out of turn, so he can go home and finish his homework and go to bed. So Jason, if you'd like to come up to the mic. Jason, could you introduce yourself? And, oh, you don't need to tell us, will you?
Hi, my name is Jason Borley. I live in Park Lane, and I'm in third grade at Wilson School. I have 23 kids in my class, and I think it is fine. I do not like having art in the portals because it's a very tight space. There are not enough tables, and there is no smartboard. They have a TV connected to, a TV connected to a computer, and it is too small to sit in the back. I like the art room because there is more supplies, enough tables, and a smartboard. Please do not switch back to art in the cart because there are definitely not enough supplies. Thank you for listening, and please consider bringing back the art room next year.
Jason, there, we don't have a smartboard in the room?
No, there is just a TV connected to a computer.
A TV on a computer?
Like a smart TV.
Is that something we could work towards? Do we have, do we have something extra in the district that we could get in there?
Yes.
Good. So we'll work to get that as soon as we can for you, okay?
All right.
So it'll make, and what was the other issue brought to us?
There is not, there's not that many supplies.
Supplies?
There's not a lot of room.
I can provide an explanation.
Okay.
The supplies are brought in by the teacher only on a day-to-day basis as she needs them. They're stored actually, as you may or may not know, on the stage. All cabinets that were built in order to keep the art supplies on the stage, so. We have them in the building, but they're not out there every day, all the time, so.
Jason, do you run out of things during the day? Is that what happens, or?
No, there are just some things I want, and like, they're not there.
Okay.
Okay, so maybe we can ask the art teacher to bring a little bit more of the supplies into the room, when she goes into the room?
Okay.
If we work on that? Okay?
Yeah, okay, okay.
All right. Jason?
Thank you.
Great job, Jason. Thank you very much.
It takes a lot of courage to get up to the mic. I'm terrified every meeting, so you did a great job. Unbelievable. Thank you. All right, we're to correspondence. Any correspondence that can be posted are posted on the table in the hallway outside this room. And now we're going to items for information. The first item is our external, our external auditor's presentation. I invite you, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Kim. I'm the engagement partner of, from EFPR, which is actually the district's external auditors. And Jason, you are a tough act to follow, so...
Can you just explain what an external audit is to the audience? I didn't know if you were going to do that.
Yeah, what an external audit is, is we are independent CPAs. They come in and audit the financial statements of the district to ensure that, we basically render an opinion on the financial statements, whether they are in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. We also audit compliance with the federal aid requirements because the district does file a single audit with the federal government, and so we audit compliance for the major And it is a, it's a requirement of New York State that school districts be audited and then submit their audited information, both to the State Education Department plus the office, the OSC, the State Controller's Office. We had the opportunity to meet with the Audit Committee September 19th and went through the details of the financial statement in some depth, and there were a lot of good questions that were asked about the district at that time. We rendered what's called an unmodified opinion or an unqualified opinion on the financial statements of the school district. We audited the school district. We also audited the extra classroom activity funds, and we audited, again, the federal awards. There were no control matters, be it material weaknesses or significant deficiencies noted during the engagement, and there were also no compliance matters with regard to laws and contracts and other matters. We were new auditors this year, and as new auditors, we created probably more pain than we would normally do. And I just want to say, you've got a first-class business office here. They were a pleasure to work with. Anything that we asked for was supplied on a timely basis, and they had given us full access to everything. And that's just... access to everything, and that's just great. So I just wanted to point that out. In looking at the financial statements of the district, the district had a good year. The general fund had a surplus at the end of the year, for the year, of just under $500,000. And what the district did with that was two things. New York State allows school districts to have unassigned fund balances of up to 4% of the following year's budget. So the school district increased the unassigned fund balance. But more importantly, the school district increased the reserves that are allowed under New York State general municipal law, about $300,000. And what that does is really provide a safety net for the district going forward. So all in all, the district had a healthy year. I will just simply point out that New York State allows up to 4%. Currently, the school district is just under 3% of, at the unassigned fund balance level. So hopefully, in the future, as results would allow, two things would happen, that unassigned fund balance would come up to the full 4%, and we would be in a position to establish more reserves. But again, from our standpoint, exceptional business office, great cooperation, and just a pleasure to do business with Rockville. So thank you.
Any questions?
Where, you want to tell people where to find the audit?
On the website, you can find the audit in its entirety. If you care to reach through how many pages of information, but it's all there for you to review if you'd like. But you might need an explanation, because we all do. All right, moving forward, we're going to hand it up to Chris, Mr. Pelletieri. He is doing district testing results.
Actually, no. I'm going to start.
Okay. Sorry, Dr. Now.
Yeah. Tonight, what we're going to do is to take a look at the, kind of the reflection of the school district, or on the school district, of the various ways in which information is collected on student performance. We have it done in two separate parts. One focuses on grades 3 through 8, and there are two pieces of that, one having to do with the state testing program and the second having to do with what we call the NWEA, which will be explained to you in some detail by Mr. Pelletieri. The second half of this, and I'll get to it when we do the introductions, I presume, on the high school, really focuses on Southside High School. Just as a matter of interpretation, what we need to do is that, despite the fact that we are required by the state of New York to, in fact, submit essentially our numbers to the public for their consumption, they are very, very difficult to interpret. And just so you know in advance, one of the two first slides, or the two first slides that you're going to be taking a look at, really have to do with the numbers of kids who do not take the exam. So, and it ranges from 50% to 77%. So what that essentially means is that the data that we have that's available to us in the state is virtually uninterpretable. It's very, very difficult for it to know what, in its entirety, the state data would look like if, in fact, all of our students showed up for the exam. Different kids at different grade levels either decide to show up or not. And as a result of that, the New York State data, even though we are required to, I think we have to take with something of a grain of salt. We will move very quickly through it. What we've done in recent years is pay a lot of attention to the NWEA. And I think when Mr. Pelletieri shares with you the information, you will begin to understand some of the reasons why. It is a test that is adaptive. It's got a vertical scale. It is everything that we believe is in the future. When you listen to people who are speaking at both the state and the national level, what they talk about is eventually moving in the direction of adaptive testing. This is all computer-based. We have virtually nobody opting out of our NWEA testing. And at the end of the day, we believe that it does, in fact, reflect what is happening here in Rockville Center. So without further ado...
Dr. Johnson, one minute. It's not a matter of not showing up for the test. People are opting out, right? You referenced that they don't show up. It's a choice of opting out.
Yes, they are showing up at school on that day, but we do not have...
Opting out of taking the test.
They do not take the exam.
I mean, I think everybody knows, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pelletieri?
Thank you. Jason, you ready? This is the exciting part right here. Keep your eyes open. I'm going to watch. Okay. Thank you. Our 3 through 8 assessment overview begins with, as Dr. Johnson pointed out, some refusal numbers. You can look at the chart. It's the same chart on both smartboards, so you can feel free to look at either one. Grade 3, grade 4, grade 5. You see across the spectrum in 13, 14, 15, 16, 16, 17, you'll see the opt-out numbers, 36% 13, 14, up to 53% last year in ELA, and 50% in math. In grade 4, 52% slightly down from the year prior, at 50% certainly down from the year prior in math. And grade 5, consistent with the year prior in ELA, slightly down in 5th grade math. So those are students whose families have decided they are not going to take the test. And as Dr. Johnson stated, they come to school, they are provided another activity, and as other students take the test. In 6th grade, the numbers really start to grow. In 6th grade, from 52% in 13, 14, up to 65% in 16, 17. Grade 6 ELA, grade 6 math, 66%. Grade 7, 65%, and math, 64. And grade 8, 77% of our students did not take the grade 8 ELA, which means, obviously, if I... Jason, check my math, but I think it's 23% did do it right. Is that right, Jason? No? Don't make me nervous. I checked that twice. I believe it's correct. 23% of the students did take the test. 8th grade does not apply since our students take the algebra regions. We do have our English Language Arts Common Core assessments in grade 3, grade 4, grade 5. Again, there are performance standards. Those are tough to read there. This presentation will be online. They are the same they have been for the past several years, Level 1. Below, Level 2 is growing, Level 3 is on par, and Level 4 is above standard. So in grade 3, you'll see 53% of our students, more than half did not take the test, but 47% did, and Rockville Center, 75% were Level 3 or 4, which is deemed passing by the state compared to the state who had 43% at Level 3 and 4. Grade 4, 75% again in Rockville Center compared to 41% for the state. However, over 50% again of our students did not take the assessment. This is an interesting one here. ELA grade 5, 77% of our students passed. This is the second... Have a good night, Jason. I'll see you, buddy. This is... Tell me if the Yankees win. Text me back, Jason, please.
You want to know the score?
Do we?
Yes, 5-0.
5-0, all right. Here we go. Let me speed this up here.
You didn't ask who.
But I'm sorry, Mark.
You didn't ask who.
I know. Believe me. I know.
We knew the question already.
Okay. This is interesting because we... In the entire state of New York, this 5th grade scored second highest in terms of percentage of grade of Level 3 and 4 in the entire state. Does that make sense? No? Second in the entire state, second place, the second highest district in terms of numbers of students in grades 3 and 4, despite the fact 62% of our students didn't take the test. I don't know necessarily how to interpret that data. Our kids did incredibly well, number 2 in the state, grade 5 ELA results, but 62% of the students didn't take the test.
So 38% of our kids...
Yes, did take... Yes, yes, yes.
38% of those kids did 77%.
Yes, 38% of our kids did 7... Got... Scored very well on that assessment. Grade 6 ELA, again, well above the state, but you see the refusal levels are high at this point, 56%, 58%. At grade 8, so we're down to 23% of the students taking the assessment. And we did not do well, obviously, in grade 8 ELA. So that's a conversation we're having with the school. As Dr. Johnson mentioned before, it's difficult to determine the use of this data. Is there something with our system? I don't believe so. You're going to look at Mr. Murphy's presentation a little while and see ELA results all the way up through the high school. These tests are supposed to indicate how students are going to do moving forward, and they certainly do not. Grade 4 Science, as we do each year, over 95% of our students passed the grade 4 Science. Now, this is the first time we've had a refusal rate that high in grade 4 Science, over 10%. 11% of the 4th graders did not take the science assessment. So however you feel about Common Core and taking state tests and things like that, the grade 4 Science is a test that kids enjoy taking. It's a hands-on, there's a practical component. I talk to parents and principals all the time about, however you feel about one assessment, such as a Common Core state, three-day assessment that takes an hour and a half each day, if you feel compelled to not have your child take that assessment, and that's a family decision, the grade 4 Science is an assessment that does remind us or point to our curriculum. It points to standards that we are teaching in our classrooms. We do get information back. It's something that I would encourage people to take part in. Yes?
Do we have that conversation with our parents when they say they don't want to take this assessment?
So I've spoken to principals about that. It's interesting, as Dr. Johnson again mentioned, NWEA, virtually all of our parents, all of our students are involved in the NWEA. We talk a lot about, again, getting the reports back within days, data that we can use informs our instruction. And so we have those conversations. I've asked principals to have those conversations. When they get a letter, sometimes you can get a blanket letter that just says, "I want out of all of these assessments." And I've said, "Please talk with parents about, with specificity, what it is that they want to make sure that they're opting out of, and try to get them to recognize the importance, again, of NWEA certainly, and the grade 4 Science assessment." Our math in grade 3. Grade 6. Grade 7. Again, you see, the numbers are not as high as they were in grade 5, grade 6. You'd worry about an 8th grade math test. Again, these tests are supposed to inform how our students are going to do on high school regions, and here we have 95% taking it in 2016 and passing in grade 8, and in 2017, 97% taking that test, the algebra regions at the middle school in grade 8. We put in earth science as well. So very difficult to interpret the state data. We do talk a lot about in the district and meet a great deal and really do deep dives into our NWEA MAP data, which is our student assessment. We give it three times a year. It's given in the fall, the winter, and the spring. Parents get an end-of-year report each year, and it, again, gives us information, immediate feedback on scores, within-days feedback reports, teachers can use that can drive instruction. So as with any external validator, you want to make sure or see how you compare against others. So you'll see here the RVC mean in Rockville Center mean in the red stripe and the NWEA National Norm in the green stripe. And you want to make sure that you are... You want to work, obviously, to be above that. That's our goal in Rockville Center. Here you see grade 3, 4, and 5. In math, again, above the national norms in 3, 4, and 5. Grade 6 through 8, above the national norms. Grade 6, 7, and 8 take a different test than the grade 5 students. There is a K-2 test, a 2-5 test, and then a 6 through... 6 through 8 test. And here we see the district, again, above the national norm. There is a New York State linking study that we can look at in the winter, and it helps us to, again, provide information for our teachers, compares how our students are doing on the NWEA, and links that, attempts to link those results to our state results, how a student might do on the upcoming state assessment. Teachers can use that for their instruction as well. And that can be accessed on our website. On Engage NY, the state puts resources for parents as well around the state assessments, how to interpret those tests. And in the end, as always, we talk about, rather, the numbers, but really thinking around having a vision, being a learner, leaning into struggle, feeding your passion, important things that we want our students to remember and work towards as opposed to, again, data and numbers. We worry about those things. Dr. Johnson, I believe that's...
Any questions that the board may have?
Yes, Chris, since Liz must have read my notes and asked one of my questions. The Common Core is due to be replaced in how many years?
So... Can I answer that? Please. The Common Core is going to be replaced this year.
Okay.
On November 30th, the State Education Department is going to have its very first rollout meeting with district superintendents, and they expect that during this year, the information about what the new Common Core, what the state is calling the generation standards are going to look like between now and June of 2019, it will be expected that school districts will, in fact, be writing curriculum in order to meet that. In the 1920s school year, they are going to begin rolling out various types of test questions associated with the new standards. And the first operational test that's going to be available will be in the spring in both math and ELA of 2021.
So we're talking four years before there's any positive changes, that parents can be reassured that the state, the state will be giving a valid test, both psychologically for their children to take, as well as something that there will be some value to, is providing for their... For the educational model that we provide.
Funny you should ask. Rockville Center is coordinating an effort with about 20 to 30 school districts in working with the NWEA and coming up with a model that will enable them to develop not only a vertical scale, the one that we're familiar with, and national norms, but in fact, to do a grade-by-grade norming system and do it for the state of New York, so that we will have a statistical package. we will have a statistical package that we can utilize statewide for those who are using the NWEA. We're doing that for two reasons, Mark. One is that in the absence of anything valid that the state provides, we need a valid measure in order to assure the community that the kids that we are educating are in fact making the satisfactory progress. And I think we can do that with the NWEA. There's a second reason, and that is that the feds under ESA have given signals that they will allow for a variety of pilots nationwide to test out various types of measurement devices, the NWEA being one of the premier products in the field right now nationwide and being adopted and utilized by many states in, in the nation right now. And they are moving very quickly to doing a state-by-state analysis so that they can become part of the overall fabric of testing nationwide. So we want to be a part of that. And some of the data that we will, we will be collecting this year, and we will be participating, whether the school district to do that, will enable the state at the time that it, it becomes eligible to apply, to use this data and to use the information from the NWEA to participate in one of those pilots. So we're trying to set the groundwork for getting that off the ground. And so that duality of purpose is built into the efforts that are going on, not just by Rockville Center, but by a whole number of schools.
But in the interim, the Common Core exam or some variation thereof for the next four years is still going to be given, maybe concurrently with a NWEA type of exam as well. So the Common Core is still going to exist in some form, not lending itself for the parents to gain trust in the system again.
Right.
Or us to gain trust in the system.
Yeah. The, the problem is this, that, you're absolutely correct, that until the spring of 2021, the state has no real plan for replacing the current format for item development. Even though they have said, by the way, and, and we will have public discussions about this as the year progresses, they are moving from a three-day model to a two-day model. But two days of an invalid test are not very different than three days of an invalid test. So the issue is the validity of the test itself, and what are they going to do in the interim? And I think you raise a very valid point. We, many school districts in this state are trying to work with the state education department and see if we can't make adjustments to that and use other formats, such as the NWEA as a proxy for or replacement for the current testing protocols during this transition period.
Not, not unless that it's, we don't offer that other test. I don't see the opt-out numbers, whether it's in this district or our geographical region, are going to change appreciably, and nor, in my opinion, should they.
The, the commissioner believes that by reducing from three to two the number of days of testing, that she will be able to bring into the fold many more kids that otherwise would have been absent from the test.
And she thought last year, the modification she made would bring more kids in as well, and it didn't.
It, it did a little bit, but not a whole lot. You're right. You're right. And as time goes on and the, and, look, I, I don't know how to interpret it. You heard Mr. Pelletieri say earlier, the, and you'll hear from John Murphy in just a few moments about how well we do in English. Well, to what extent are these predictive of how well students should do? There should be some insights that we gain from the information collected by the state as to how kids are going to be able to do and what adjustments we should be able to make to our curriculum and to our instructional program. And we get literally no insight from that whatsoever. Doesn't help us.
I don't think anyone here is, is saying that these exams as currently given and formatted are providing us with any useful information. The question is, is how do we get the trust, give trust to the, the kids that they're going to take an exam that they can intelligently go through, that the parents are going to realize that we're not doing, or the state is not doing harm to their, their children in, in the way that the tests are, are given and formulated? And we, as a district, can gain useful information from whatever procedure or exams that, that we choose to give, just by calling it a different name and waiting another four years. Another generation of, of elementary school kids is going to be cast aside and still have this whole, this whole situation not change.
Mark, the, the, the discussion is even going to become more bizarre this year than it has over the last few. And the reason is, and it's, and just let me articulate it a little bit differently, although you've said it already. It is that the state made the decision that the Common Core was not appropriate for New York State. It went and revised the Common Core. We now have the next-gen generation standards, which were just recently adopted by the regions and will be rolled out during this school year. The tests that will be given to children in March and April of this upcoming school year are based on the old Common Core. Now, is this something, you know, we talk about cognitive dissonance every once in a while? It's hard to make sense of this when they've, first of all, they're, they're telling us that we cannot use the results of this test to place, promote, or evaluate teachers. The tests that will continue to be in place for the next three years are going to be based on standards that the state has already said are no longer appropriate for New York, but the kids will be tested on those standards. So what are we to do as a school district in adopting the new generation or the next generation standards, which we are going to be required to do over the next two years? What happens to our kids as we begin to move away from the old Common Core to the new generation or next generation standards? And yet the tests that we will be administered are based upon an entirely different and older set of standards? The state has got to come to grips with this, and they recognize, I will tell you, that it's, it's a problem. And I'm not sure how they're going to be responding to it, but just understand, we, among other many school districts in the state, recognize it as a problem and are now working with one another to try to put together a satisfactory resolution to this by working with a company like the NWEA in order to garner credibility with our communities by using a valid test for measuring the progress of our kids. And that's what's going to happen, and it's going to happen statewide.
We currently have schools that do not meet the minimum amount of participation for taking of the Common Core exams, correct?
Yes, and that's going to be a problem.
Now...
Under ESA.
Right. Now, has the federal Department of Education now come out with guidelines that say that they will be taking away grant money because of that for districts, for districts that do not meet these minimums?
That has been threatened since day one.
Right. But they, we realize they never were going to send out the education police.
Right.
But now things, there's a new sheriff in town. So things changed.
I can't answer that. I don't know. But the threat is there, and it has been for the last three, three years.
But, but we are far from alone.
Correct.
I mean, we are far from alone on, on not meeting our ninety-five percent requirement.
Right. The entire state didn't meet it.
Yeah. The issue is for New York State, they are not going to meet the ninety-five percent threshold. And it's the state, not just individual school districts, that's, is in jeopardy. I don't believe for one second that the feds will not provide New York State. I don't, excuse me. I'm, I'm sorry. I don't want to, I don't want to, I'm out of the tea leaf business, but I don't, I don't want to say, but, but that threat is there. What they're going to do to individual school districts, I don't know. That's never really been articulated. It is, it is directed at the state, not at individual districts.
It's the test that's a mess, and we've known it's a mess for a long time. And, and our, our opt-out numbers make it even more invalid for Rockville Center. But our students are still being taught a curriculum, still moving forward. They're not losing out because of this. It's the test that...
Correct.
Is the problem.
Yes.
So I just want everybody to know that we are still teaching a curriculum, moving our kids forward, putting them into high school at a successful rate. They're being successful in high school. It's the test that's problematic for us.
But we need to understand that we, with the Board of Ed, have recognized our responsibility to be accountable to this community and therefore have opted into a test that we believe is valid, is reliable, and in fact enables us to make statements to the community and to the board that our kids are making satisfactory progress.
So that's where the NWEA comes in.
That's where the NWEA comes in.
We're trying to get a tool that will totally evaluate our kids, so you understand where your, where your children are progressing along, and that's where this conversation is. So the state tests are really invalid for us because of our opt-out numbers, and there, you know, there's no way you can gauge how a school does if fifty percent of the students don't take the test. There's no, no, no value to that at all, really, right?
Could I just add one little caveat to that? And that is, what you just said is that the data from the test, in addition to the test itself, is not valid. And the reason why the data is not valid is that we don't have a large enough sample in some of our grades in some of our schools to in fact make judgments as to whether or not the information that we're getting back enables us to make a satisfactory judgment as to whether or not the kids are making the progress that we would expect or not. The validity of the test is an entirely different and very technical discussion. That really is not appropriate for this venue here, but does take place on a number of different occasions, and there needs to be more of a vetting on how that test is developed and how the state is moving to provide during the interim period some kind of valid measure. And to get back to what Mark was saying just a few minutes ago, and what, just to reinforce what you were saying, validity is, is the key issue. And we do not have at this time a valid measure of either math or English, language arts.
Wait a second. No, we have NWEA.
We have NWEA, but the, I'm sorry. Why say we? We as a state.
From the state test.
Correct.
I was just going to ask, you know, considering the NWEA is our valid measurement, you know, we only as parents see the results once at the end of the year, and I'm just curious as to how come, since we take it three times throughout the year, that we don't get that progress three times in the year, so we can see where the children are going? You know, it's an opportunity to work with the teacher on, you know, maybe where the child is doing very well or needs some improvement.
I know teachers often share the early results with parents on, when they have the progress meetings throughout the year with parents. It's something that we can talk with our principals about. I know that they do establish an end-year report. The teachers look at it throughout the year, but that's not something that we have sent home. I know many districts, in working with NWEA, send home that end-year report, do not send home those throughout-the-year reports. But that's something we can talk with NWEA about in terms of advisement, and, and we can talk with our principals about as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Pelletieri.
Lots of questions, but any, any other questions we want to answer?
We can answer, right.
Lots of questions, not lots of answers.
Okay. All right, Dr. Johnson?
Sure. Let me just ask Mr. Murphy and Liz Nissler if they would, I don't know in what order who's going to be doing what first, but...
I'll lead off.
Listen, we, we, we need to take a look at, at, at the picture of, of where our kids end up. You know, we are a backwards planning institution. We really need to take a look at what happens to children after thirteen years with us. And that's what tonight's discussion at the high school is all about, and the opportunities that we provide to them, and demonstrating that the progress that, that they have demonstrated over the years and that they make throughout high school really adequately prepares them for the next layer of education in college. One of the things that we have tried to emphasize, and I think will be reflected in much of what John and Liz will be able to present, is the opportunity of getting more and more kids into higher-level coursework. And the research is replete with studies that now demonstrate that exposure to higher-level curriculum prior to graduating from high school is a critical piece in success in college. And the more that we can get kids exposed to higher-level sciences, higher-level math, and things like the IB experience in English or social studies, the more likely it is that they're going to succeed later on and hit the ground running once they leave us. So a lot of the statistics that we put together in reflecting it is on what it is that we do as a high school in this community, really is about how we serve this community better by getting more of our children involved in the exposure to that higher-level curriculum. So on that note, I suspect there may be lots of questions and, and maybe not, but John Murphy, principal of South Side High School. John?
Good evening, again. Thank you. And before we become mired in a lot of numbers and a lot of data, I'd like to try to frame this, but we're going to go through three major clusters of tests, Regents, New York State Regents exams, AP exams, NIB exams. And I'd just like you to think in terms of a narrative before we start going through the results, that what story are, do these pictures, do these numbers tell? Numbers can mean anything depending on the context, and I'd like you to try to draw your own conclusions in terms of what picture does, do these numbers provide in terms of individual student performance, the landscape of the high school at large, and the big question in terms of the extent to which we have provided students with an experience at the high school so that by the time they graduate, choice is theirs, meaning have we given them the requisite skills, content, and classwork so that when they leave here, the option is theirs in terms of course of study, the option is, is theirs in terms of college admissions, choice of careers? So that's the goal. The long term is to think programmatically. Can we, can we create clusters or groups of courses in a cohesive program that gives the students the long-term choice? The other message, and we'll have comparative frames of reference as we talk about this, is to think about improvement. No matter what numbers we put up here, there's always going to be room for growth and improvement. Are we aware of those? And have we created an assessment model that gives us the information that we can best serve our students and know that we can pinpoint accurately what we need to work on specifically, both the professionals in the building as well as students? As well, at the end, Ms. Nissler Cross, who will take over to discuss the IB diploma program. Why is it that we have become so married and allied to the IB model? And we'll talk a little bit about transparency and the extent to which it does provide us feedback, meaningful feedback, both to the students in process, similar to what Ms. Hackett was asking, how do I know how I'm doing in process, as well as teachers and, and planning professional development in the future. So the first model I'd like you to consider is the New York State Regents exam model. In order to graduate from a public high school, there are three, basic three different types of, of diplomas a student can earn. A Regents diploma is a student with other, I'm simplifying this, with other course-credit requirements. A student needs to pass a minimum of five Regents exams, algebra, global history, United States history, English, and one science exam, which is usually either earth science or living environment. There are exceptions to all of these as I'm laying them out. In order to earn a Regents with advanced designation, students need to pass those exams plus two more math exams, Regents and Algebra II, a French or a foreign language exam. In our case, it's French or Spanish, which is usually done at the 10th grade level, as well as a second science exam. Now, those aren't the only Regents exams that are given. For instance, after the two science exams, there are other Regents exams, such as chemistry and physics, which could be used towards the advanced designation but are used as advanced coursework. There are other vagaries and options available for the students as well. A student with an IEP, a special education student, can also earn a local diploma, which is the five Regents exams, with one or more of them meeting what's called the low-pass safety net of 55 to 64, assuming the student has an IEP. There are other variations... There are other variations within this. And in the recent years, there have been other modifications such as a compensatory safety net and what's called a superintendent's determination for the local diploma. In the last four years, we've had a grand total of three local diplomas, and none of them have required any of those safety nets. They've all been straight local diplomas without any other compensatory safety nets that have been put in by the state. Last year's graduating class, 98% of all the graduates earned a straight Regents diploma. It's actually 98.7%, but I didn't know if the state was going to round up on the report, so I errred on the side of conservative. So it's between 98 and 99% of all of our students earned Regents diplomas. The students who didn't earned a local diploma for, and their profiles, and I don't want to itemize because the sample set is so small, you run the risk of talking about individual students when you do. But suffice it to say, the students who did not earn a Regents diploma had significant either medical or life circumstances that limited them. So I'm as happy for those three students as I am for all the other students. 87% of all the graduates earned a Regents diploma with advanced designation. That's the highest number that I've seen. I went back 13 years in terms of the Regents with advanced designation rate for this high school. The state results, in other words, the statewide averages for course averages and Regents earners are not out yet. But I'm going to hazard a guess that it puts us in rarefied air. I don't want to project, but it's pretty rare. It's for that reason, among others, that Southside was recognized by the state, may have last year, as what's called a reward school. That it's not just an aggregate of your Regents results, but it's your graduation rate and your achievement gap, what they call. In other words, are you just, are your results being padded by having a lot of high achievers? But if you look at those students who are historically underrepresented among high achievers, based on socioeconomic status, based on ethnicity, is there a gap between their achievement and your majority population? In order to become a reward school, there cannot be a significant gap. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later. So as we move forward, which I guess is up to me, right? I know there's a lot of numbers here, and I'm going to leave it up for a second, but I'm going to talk over my numbers. These are the individual Regents performance results. What you have in the big numbers are the results from last year. The parenthetical numbers are that from the year before. Not all Regents exams are created equally. In other words, English is a requirement for all students in order to graduate high school. Chemistry is not, nor is physics. So for the sake of this, in terms of context, what I've provided are the passing rates, the mastery rates, and in the left-hand column, the percentage of the cohort. In other words, each, these exams are not all given in the same year. English, for instance, is traditionally given in 11th grade. Spanish and French are given in the 10th grade. Global is given in 10. US system is given in 11. At this school, living environment is traditionally here, given in 9th grade. Our 8th graders traditionally take our science. There are exceptions, students who transfer in, students who want a delayed plan. But this is the model. The reason that I'm telling you that is that they're not all created equally. And when you're looking at averages and mastery rates, you have to contextualize them in terms of the percentage of the cohort who are taking the individual exam itself. It stands to reason that 100% of 11th graders take the English Regents. It's a requirement. Every student takes it. But as you move forward, it is not common for 95% of 10th graders to take the foreign language exam. That is more than extraordinary. The reason that it's not 100% is that there are certain special education students who are language exempt, who do not have to. And then that was one of the caveats that I was preparing before. You do, if you are a language exempt special ed student, you are still eligible for a Regents with advanced designation as dictated by your IEP. So the, I'd like you to consider the cohort, the percentage of students who are taking each exam as you consider the passing and the mastery rate. 78% of 11th graders take physics. 78% of 11th graders take physics. That exceeds the Regents requirement, exceeds the Regents with advanced designation requirement, and goes beyond that. Why? Because remember the narrative that we just started. The real goal of these assessments are benchmarks that put us in a position, to put students in a position to take advanced coursework, which really gives them the option of deciding what they want to do when they leave here, what courses they want to take, and can they be successful once they take here programmatically. It is for that reason that I'm especially proud of the following, which will not stand out here as a wow number. For instance, 95% of the students, I'm sorry, 94% of the students passed a living environment Regents last year, which is, compares, as you can see in the parentheses, to 97%. 76% of our students passed the Common Core Algebra Regents. Now, those students are traditionally the students, that's not a representative sample. Usually at the high school, most of our Rockville Center-Southside students have already taken the algebra exam in 8th grade. These are students who did not pass it the first time or who transferred in from another district. The reason that I'm especially proud of those two numbers, and you couldn't figure it out for yourself, is that you're comparing two different groups of students. This is not the same cohort. Despite the fact that there was a statistically significant increase in the number of students with testing accommodations, meaning special education students with an IEP, students with a 504 plan, students and teachers work collaboratively to maintain a comparable passing rate. For frame of reference, just to give you a sample. 34 students received testing accommodations for the living environment exam in 2016. 52 received testing accommodations in 2017. 16 students received testing accommodations for algebra in 2016. 26 received testing accommodations in 2017. That's significant. Despite that, maybe because of it, teachers and kids worked in concert and maintained a steady performance level to overcome those obstacles. And I'm as proud of the students as I am for the teachers working in concert with things like that. So what I'm trying to say is amidst all that, there's a student behind these statistics. And there's a story, a narrative that tells. So please be very wary for these comparative references. Again, I don't want to go through every single one, but those of who have showed up for PTA meetings and have been part of this conversation in the past know that the geometry and the Algebra II are, continue to be a cause for concern for us. For a lot of reasons, but the shorthand version is that we find them to be a very unreliable instrument in terms of assessment of students proficiency, profession of students mastery, and their ability to do what we are trying to do, which is to give the students the skills and the confidence to pass on to higher coursework to leave here as confident learners. On all three indicators, the geometry and the Common Core Algebra II are abysmal failures. Now, the passing rate for Common Core Algebra II is actually pretty high. Our traditional pass rate for the Algebra II trigonometry is usually 80 to 85%, which sounds great. Then why am I complaining about the test? Because all, the mastery rate for the test was cut in half. Despite the fact that we have indicators, course grade, teacher self-diagnosis, their performance before and after, indicates that that is an unrealistic characterization of students who achieved mastery in that course. The same is true for geometry. It's the second year in a row. While the passing rate is low, it's really the frustration level that is inflicting upon students, the lower mastery rate, which is instilling a lack of confidence on their ability to self-identify as math students, as well as the teachers' frustration that they're doing everything that's humanly possible and in working in concert. And I think all the stakeholders agree. And I think I take certain comfort and satisfaction in the parents that I've spoken to and the students, that they say it's not the teachers. Because it's not. The way that the test is being implemented and the way that the cutoff scores are being diagnosed continues to be a cause for concern. It is for that reason that, again, similar to what we did last year, if the Regents result for the June 2017 geometry or Algebra II Regents had as an adverse effect on the student's course average, we are working presently to remove that Regents exam from the student's course average. I'm moving on now in a minute. So suffice it to say that I just want to also explain that these test results are the aggregate for the year. Meaning these are the August, January, and June. August 2016, January 2017, June 2017, aggregate results. That passing rate of 97% for English are the junior cohort. As it stands right now, the passing rate is 99%. Why? Because that's the students who took it in June for the first time. Some students took it again in August during summer school and passed. So as we now stand here, as we speak, the passing rate for the English Regents is at, bless you, 99%. Please, again, I'm going to jump to the AP math courses because, first of all, they're the non-programmatic. In other words, they're standalones in the midst of two programs, the Regents sequence and the IB sequence. Understanding that this is for the context, again, are we providing access to students so that if they so choose by 11th and 12th grade, they can take advanced coursework that we know prepares them for university? Irrespective of what their major is going to be, shouldn't they have the decision-making process for themselves at high school? So access is controlled by achievement. Again, AP Calculus is the last step in a three-tier process from Regents exams to IB Maths to AP Maths. The reason that the AP Maths are offered is that the IB Math are called in the European model, maths, meaning plural mathematics, multiple different types of maths, algebra, geometry, trigonometry, statistics. These courses are more specific, more content-specific, to calculus and statistics, which number one is appealing to universities, and number two gives students the specificity of learning a specific type of math and offering the chance for college credit if they so choose. And we, okay, 77% of the graduates from last year completed an AP Math course before graduating. Even amongst the elite high schools in the region, that number is, I don't have a frame of reference for you to provide. In other words, I could talk about this. That number is off the charts. The year before, which was a good year, 71% of our students completed an AP Math course. Students self-select into which level. BC Calculus is by far the most challenging. AB Calculus is, again, the full-year calculus course that a lot of students take for two different reasons. They self-select in, it's very appealing to colleges, and they want that one year of calculus under their belt here, even if they're going to take calculus in college. In other words, it's not really about the calculus credit as much as it is, I want to take that year of college because I heard it's a bear. And if I have that one year of calculus while I'm here, the chance of that not crushing my grade point average when I get to college improves significantly. We also let students self-select into the calculus, into the course of their choice. AP Statistics is becoming increasingly popular for a variety of reasons, not the least of which is the Algebra II, the new Algebra II course does emphasize statistics. The average scores may be low relative to what you would anticipate. You know, AP scores are on a scale of one to five. But I need you to consider the fact that that might be true. But number one, they're on the upswing. Number two, when you're controlling for participation rate, you have to balance achievement and access, with the goal of which is really to provide them the full comprehensive experience so that they're prepared when they leave here. Which leaves us to the program that we use as the advanced coursework for 11th and 12th grade. And I'll leave that to Ms. Nizla Cross.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the Board and Dr. Johnson for giving us this opportunity to come here tonight. As we've seen tonight, our students give us so much to be proud of. And it's nice to be able to spotlight and highlight some of their accomplishments here with the IB program. So in terms of the May 2017 participation and results, we really had another great The number of students involved last year was 441. This basically relates to the 11th and 12th grade students who registered either as full diploma candidates, meaning they completed the whole course of study, and I'll explain what that entails momentarily, or students who registered as course candidates, meaning that they took individual courses. Maybe they chose to take one IB class, maybe they chose to take three or five. One of our goals here at the high school, as Mr. Murphy was saying and Dr. Johnson mentioned, is increasing access and having the program reflect the population of the whole school. And I'd like to note that actually 12% of the students who were involved of this 441 were students with special needs. And they did quite well in terms of results. In terms of the senior class, if I focus in and hone in on them, 51% of the senior class chose to challenge themselves as full IB diploma candidates. That's about 130 students who took on the full diploma. This was the second year that we had 51% involved. And I'd like to note that that's actually our highest percentage in our history. So a lot of students are, you know, embracing this. Happily, 89 students did indeed earn the diploma. That's about 35% of the senior class. And additionally, we had 89% of the senior class complete at least one IB course before graduating. Okay? So a really significant amount. And just to give you a frame of reference, there's really no public school in New York State that comes close to these figures. You know, the one that I can think of that comes closest, maybe under a quarter of their students even try for the diploma. So the fact that so many of our students are seeking to challenge themselves, seeking to take on coursework that's really going to prepare them for school, it's pretty exciting. And it is exciting because we know that the educational opportunity that they're being afforded here at the high school is absolutely preparing them for college. They come back and they tell us so. So the academic skills that they're gaining, the research skills, the writing skills, the, you know, skills of analysis, their self-management skills, really are going to help them succeed in college and in life after Southside. So what I'd like to do is walk you through the diploma requirements. One, because it covers all aspects of the program, so it encompasses all students that are involved. And also, it'll give you a context to appreciate what our students are capable of and what they've been accomplishing. In order to meet the requirements for the IB diploma, students must take three higher level and three standard level courses from six core curriculum groups. Now, really, the difference between higher level and standard level is one of length, one of hours seated in a class. So higher level classes, students participate for 240 hours. That's a two-year course. When we talk about higher level courses, we're talking two years. When we talk about standard level courses, it's 150 hours. So it might be a one-year course, it might be a two-year course. But students are required for the diploma to take three higher level, three standard level. And you can see the six core curriculum groups to the right there. And when you kind of, you know, step back and look at it, the idea is that the IB program, diploma program, is providing a comprehensive program of study. The students are getting a well-rounded liberal arts foundation. As Mr. Murphy said earlier, that when they go off to college, they're going to have lots of options open to them. They haven't limited themselves to anything in particular. They have They have a strong foundation throughout. Each course is graded on a scale of 1 to 7. So to earn the diploma, students need to accumulate a minimum of 24 points. Okay? Again, that's a minimum of 24 points. So what I put together here is a sample diploma program and results, just so you can see how it all comes together. You know, when I go visit the students or we, you know, go over their registration, we look at, what are your three higher levels? What are your three standard levels? And in the parentheses next to each, these are, say, sample results in each course from 1 to 7. So this is an example of a student who got a 28-point IB diploma. And if you note at the bottom, it says, "Students are able to get three additional bonus points through central elements," which I'll talk about shortly. What I would like to note is that our students average 30-point IB diplomas. So they really do very well and are very well-prepared in terms of their coursework. So I'll move on to the three central elements, which are the Extended Essay, TOK, and CAS. These are called the central elements because they're really at the heart of the program. The experience and skills that the students gain through these central elements are meant to inform their coursework and their other subject courses. And reciprocally, the coursework and insights and skills gained are supposed to inform these experiences. So it's very much a symbiotic relationship, and I'll explain what I mean momentarily. So for the Extended Essay, students complete a 3,000-to-4,000-word extended essay. They choose a subject area and a topic that is of interest to them. They have choice. And they go about researching, writing. And a new focus with the Extended Essay is also to reflect on that experience. So it's not just about, you know, getting down 3,000 words, but really pausing to say, what am I learning through this process? You know, where have I experienced obstacles or difficulties? How can I overcome them? Or what advice have I gotten from my mentor? Next, in senior year, actually, students take Theory of Knowledge, which is one of my favorite courses in the building. This is a course where they reflect on the nature of knowledge. You know, they look at, what do we claim to know? How do we know it? What's the evidence? They consider different lenses, different perspectives. So I talked about sort of a symbiotic relationship and this sort of interdisciplinary aspect to the program. In Theory of Knowledge, a teacher might bring up the idea of confirmation bias, for instance. Okay? That we are prone to seek out and accept information that supports our currently-held beliefs. Okay? So as they're talking about that, ideally, a student might say, hey, we were just talking about that. My science teacher just warned me about that in biology when we were doing an experiment. And then, you know, again, in an ideal world, another student might say, wait, is that like bias in, you know, English class when we're talking about journalism? You know, and bias, an author's bias or a writer's bias? And then the teacher might point out, well, what about in history? When you talk about bias in historical sources? And so students start to make connections and links at a very high level. And this is what really makes this a program, a program of study rather than just independent, you know, classes that they happen to take and check off. The last piece is CAS, which stands for Creativity, Activity, and Service. And this, I think, is another element that really makes the IB program special, in that it focuses on students' lives outside of the classroom. It encourages students to reflect on their creative pursuits or reflect on but also engage in creative pursuits, physical activity, as well as humanitarian pursuits. And so, just like with the Extended Essay, they're asked to pause and reflect. You know, it's not just about resume building, but think about how you're growing as a human being. Right? What are you learning through the experiences? When you're helping others? When you're engaged in your community? When you're, you know, engaged in physical activity? How are you developing as a human being? So it's really much more of a holistic view. It's not just about the academics in the classroom. You know, we're looking for mental, physical, social engagement from the students. So now that I've given you the overview of the whole program, I'd like to zoom in and look at individual course results at the HL and SL levels. So what you'll notice is both the school average and the global average is listed. One way that we evaluate our success is by comparing the two together. And the reason we do this is that many IB schools around the world restrict access to the IB or to IB courses, and they only allow their top students to engage in these courses. Many of these are private schools or magnet schools, you know, that have gated programs. We know here that the Rockville Center philosophy is much different. We encourage students to participate at a level that is right for them. We want them to engage in the IB program, in IB coursework, again, so that they're not limited in their choices going forward and that they have excellent preparation for college. It's also what has led external agencies to recognize our efforts. Last year, we were identified as a reward school by New York State. We were named a School of Opportunity. And every year, we have schools that want to come visit us because the research bears out, what Dr. Johnson mentioned. You know, students who have access to more challenging coursework, higher-level coursework, are better prepared for what's to come in college. So we really have served as a model for a number of schools. Okay? So if you look at the data here, when we see that our averages approximate or exceed the global average, we know that we're doing things right. And when we see that our students with special needs, their averages are matching the school averages, we know that we're doing something really right. So in math studies, environmental systems, history, we're seeing that. If you take a look here, consider the success of IB history. In the past, we've struggled to approximate the global average, but this year, we had a revised curriculum, revised course. And with the teachers' efforts, students' efforts, we were able to bridge the gap. Students, sorry, teachers attended training. They analyzed results. That's a major part of the professional development that occurs here at the high school. You know, getting the data, analyzing it closely, looking for trends, looking for patterns, and thinking about how we can inform instruction to address any issues that crop up. And so this year, with history, HL, we had a great deal of success for one of our most inclusive courses. Right? You can also look at English with 222 students. Again, one of our most inclusive courses. Those are often some of our most successful. And when we have courses with this many numbers, these large numbers, you know, results tend to fluctuate. So I think, for instance, in English, I think we went down maybe a tenth of a point. And in biology, we went up three tenths of a point. So things fluctuate, you know, from year to year. I am happy to point out, music and theater exceeded the global average this year. And if we switch to the standard-level exam results, all right, please notice both the math courses exceeded the global average as well. SL Math did phenomenally, averaging a 5. And also, French had one of its strongest years, I think, in over a decade. So those courses have been doing very nicely. Another way to consider our results is to look at the percentage of students who score a 4 or better. As I mentioned before, the IB courses are graded on a scale of 1 to 7. And 4 is generally considered to be satisfactory understanding of the content and the skills. So in looking here, we can see Music and Theater had 100% of our students scoring 4 or better, Math SL, 93%, and so on. So a lot of very nice results. There has been a lot of growth in the program this year. As I mentioned, we generally have about 50, 51%. This year's seniors and juniors, we have somewhere in the vicinity of 60% range. We have a lot of students who are interested, who are taking advantage of the program offered here. And to offer them support, we, I'd like to thank the board as well. We have added a second Extended Essay Coordinator and CAS mentors to help guide the students through these processes. So the students had Extended Essay mentors and a coordinator who oversaw them. Now, we have CAS mentors, who are members of the faculty, who are going to be helping the students identify CAS experiences and guide them through the reflective process. One possible cause of some of our growth might be attributed to this first bullet point. IB Business Management was a course that we offered for the first time last year, year one. It was very popular, it's been doing very well. And it offered an opportunity for more students to get involved because not all students wanted to double up in a science or not all students wanted to take one of the courses in the arts. So Business Management opens up a doorway for a number of students who felt that now they wanted to attempt the diploma or, again, maybe just wanted to take it as a course candidate. So this year is the first year of our IB Business Management, year two. So our teachers wrote curriculum this year and are focused on that. We also had, this is the first year of our new IB Film, year-one curriculum. And what's interesting is IB practices what it preaches just as students and teachers are asked to reflect on their experiences and their work. The IB does so as well with a seven-year review process. And they look through their courses. They look at the feedback that they receive from schools. And they go through a review cycle determining, you know, do they want to make changes to the curriculum? Do they want to make changes to the assessment? They want to keep current, make sure coursework's relevant, as well as make sure that best practices are being implemented. So this year, our IB Film teacher attended training. She wrote curriculum for year one. Right? And we're looking forward to seeing how that goes. And then, next year coming up, in terms of, you know, updates and news, we will also have curriculum revisions in Spanish, French, and psychology. So there's always, you know, some sort of exciting new development occurring. And we're just looking forward to it and looking forward to helping our students continue to succeed in the IB program. That's it. Thank you.
It's up to you. He's preparing. Any questions and comments?
A question. The Regent results, as you indicated, for Geometry, and I think it was Algebra II, are a cause of some concern. But math studies in the IB is, from what I saw, is a strong point. So trying to find a correlation between the two. So is it something that, you know, it goes to what you were saying earlier, is that we're not talking about, it's not teachers who are the issue or anything? It's not the students? Because essentially, they're going to be the same from year to year with minor variations. Is it the Regions exam? Is it a curriculum? Something that maybe needs to be tweaked in terms of Regions exams?
Yes.
But this is not the first year we've seen this?
No. We need a new Geometry and Algebra II Regions exam.
Well, we need a new exam. So you're saying it's not, we are, the curriculum, what our curriculum would stand up to state, what the state scrutiny would be for what they are suggesting?
Our 9 to 12 math curriculum exceeds the state standards by a ridiculous amount.
Okay.
To such an extent that our 11th graders are in IB math and are excelling, exceeding the global average when you compare against more elite, narrowed programs.
Right.
Can I just jump in for a second?
Yes, you may.
Can you just talk about, because we talked about this in the past, can you talk about how integrated Algebra, Common Core Algebra II now, is not, doesn't really fit well with our sequence?
It depends on what the sequence is. The change from Algebra II Trig to Algebra placed less of an emphasis on trigonometry and more of an emphasis on introduction to statistics and probability, which, if you are gravitating toward a statistic sequence, makes sense. If, however, you are gravitating towards a more pre-calculus calculus bent, you're at a disadvantage because trigonometry is the foundation of an introduction of pre-calculus, which in turn is calculus. So the sequence, in terms of sequencing and what our students have indicated is their preference, because, remember, they select into which path they chose, requires compensatory teaching on part of the teachers and learning on the part of the students.
Has New York State addressed this at all? Because it's been brought to their attention.
Yes. I can't speak to whether they've addressed it.
Dr. Johnson, can you speak to that?
The easiest way to answer is not yet. But they are very much aware of the problem. We are still discussing it. And even though they've adopted the standards, there is still this open question about Geometry and Algebra II and what it's going to look like. And the variety of topics that, it's still being debated. And I don't understand why they haven't come out and made a more affirmative statement in support of getting kids ready for calculus. But not yet.
My questions have been answered.
Still your questions, again?
Nope. You can take them. I wrote them down for you.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to congratulate you. You said it very softly, but, and you said, "Public schools in New York State don't have these numbers." I think it's broader than New York State as far as the amount, the inclusivity of our program and how many people, how many of our students get involved. And it's an amazing, an amazing accomplishment, and I would like to congratulate both of you.
Ms. Nizlak wasn't comfortable saying this one, so I will. Our Regions, our IB diploma success percentage is greater than the Regions with Advanced Designation percentage for the state.
Let that sink in.
In other words, we have more students earning an IB diploma as a percentage of the cohort than the state has earning a Regions with Advanced Designation.
There's a lot.
There's a lot.
Yeah, and something else that was not really emphasized here, although it is a very, very important piece, is the percentage of kids in the graduating classes who are going for the IB diploma. And again, getting back to the idea that even though they don't achieve it, living through that experience is an extremely important component to preparation for the next level of, at college. And those kids, even though they may get a point or two away from it, still come back and say that the experience itself was really incredible and, in fact, got them prepared. So again, our push is to get as many kids involved. And, I mean, it's a wonderful thing to say that our kids get the IB diploma. We have 89 of our kids do it, and we may exceed that this year. But when you take a look at, what is it this year, John? It's 60?
61.
61%, 61%?
Yeah, it'll be over 60% for the first time. That's a big jump.
Who are making that push on their own. It's extraordinary, absolutely extraordinary. And a tremendous compliment to the staff at the high school, the administration in the high school. So, again, getting back to the plaudits that you deserve, they're there. So, thank you very much.
And look, and as a former, as a suffering IB parent at home, and I know you didn't, to the families at home, this is a lot of work. We know. We're painfully cognizant of that. And we're constantly revisiting, you know, volume versus quality versus free time versus being a human being versus being 16. And we're pain, we're aware, cognizant, and constantly revisiting that. So thank you.
Look, you know what? If I could just comment on that for, because we talk about that a lot. I know that you, as parents, suffered through it as well. But... as, but, but, but you need to understand that this is an opportunity for our children here at Southside to experience a college-level curriculum before they leave us with support and counseling. Once they leave us, and they have that experience, they don't have the same network of support behind them. And so consequently, by doing it once before they leave us, it gives them an incredible opportunity to succeed once they do leave us. And one of these days, we need to get back and take, and review the study again on how many of our kids finish in four years, in relationship to the rest of the world. That's, that isn't, that is very, very important to us, and something we watch very carefully and regularly examine, and it is what helps us make the decision, even though I know it's a stretch for some of our families. It helps us push even more of our kids in the direction of doing it at a time when we can provide them the support that they need in order to get through it successfully. So... By the way, could I just jump in and answer one more question about Algebra II? One of the things you need to know, which is very disturbing to me, and there, there is, I won't say wholesale, but there is a large contingent of school districts in the state who are abandoning the Regents with Advanced Designation altogether, because of what is happening with Algebra II. And what they are doing is, is saying that the math curriculum does not satisfactorily prepare these kids for higher-level math, and as a result, they're abandoning it altogether, putting together their own curriculum. And I think it's tragic, because essentially, the message is to the state, you, it, it's going to relegate the Regents to something of insignificance. Now, many of these are AP schools, very few of them are IB. But I will tell you that, that it is very disturbing to see, because it is not, these are very, very reputable school districts that are doing this. The vast majority of them are up in the rest, Westchester and Rockland County, there aren't a whole lot in Nassau County, but I will tell you that there will be a number in Nassau and Suffolk this year who probably will abandon it altogether. So, it's sad, but that's why I'm saying, not yet. I'm hoping that the state is going to come forward and address this issue and kill this movement before it really gets, gets any real headway. I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry. For those who are struggling through IB, I have two boys in college who have come back and said it has helped them so much to get through that level of work here, where they do have the help, they can go back to the teachers, because in college, it's just thrown at you and go figure it out on your own. Here, they have the opportunity to get some help working in their way, and, you know, forming this, this way of studying, and it has helped them immensely in college. Both boys have come back and said that, you know, without a doubt, it was such a good benefit to have. So, if that's any consolation for anybody who's struggling, that's, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll answer it that way. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Garth. Thank you, Ms. Litt. Okay. As we move on to the policy, as our items for discussion, our policy 7160 is up. We're going to hand the mic over to Dr. Johnson for, for a moment, and then it'll, we'll land it up to her.
Yeah, actually, I, we've met with members of the board, we listened very carefully to what the, what the representatives of the, you know, just the members of the community came to the microphone to discuss with us, and put together some revisions in the policy. And maybe, Noreen, if you wouldn't mind, just going over a few of those changes to open up the discussion about any particulars that the board may want to focus on. So, Noreen?
Sure. In two previous meetings, we laid out the evolution of the current policy discussions from its inception regarding students assigned to elementary schools outside of their zone. The Board of Ed, in both executive and public sessions, has talked about this at great length. An enrollment policy committee of board members, parents, and administrators was formed, who discussed the policy for several months, proposing a new policy. And most recently, there was a public forum to discuss the, the policies and to hear feedback from the district. And really, to crystallize a little bit better the public concern. So, the board certainly recognizes that there are times where, that might dictate diverting from the boundaries of our current zones, and there are situations that may, where that may be warranted. But after all these discussions, that we drew a few conclusions. One, that the policies presented today have complicated in some ways the central purpose or intention of the policies addressing elementary reassignment. And secondly, what became clear, that there were very limited and specific circumstances when requests for exemptions from current zones were either requested by the parent or for opportunities were made available. When someone asks for reassignment of stu, of their students from one school, their home-zone school, to another, they're essentially asking for a zoning exception. And because of this, we decided to revisit the existing zoning exemption policy, or assignment to elem, elementary schools outside, to, assignment to elementary schools, policy 7160, to come up with a policy that would clarify some of the concerns articulated by the public, and help us to get to where we wanted to get to, in terms of allowing some opportunity for zoning exemptions. So, policy 7159, that had gone through several stages with the Board of Ed but not approved, was put aside, and the focus went back on 7160. So, what the board is reviewing tonight is a revision of policy 7160. It lays out three potential scenarios when, where families can request zoning exemptions to an elementary school outside of their home zone. The revision attempts to simplify the language and make clear the procedures for requesting those exemptions. So, the three times that zoning exemptions may be requested or made available are when a family is moving within the district, buys a home in a zone where their children are not currently attending. Secondly, when a family enters the school district for the first time, a new entrant, either a new entrant to the district in upper grades, or a family entering kindergarten for the first time. And thirdly, when the parent of an elementary school student requests the exemption based on a situation that may be adverse to a child's health, safety, or welfare. So, this revision streamlines the zoning exemption process and requires zoning hearings for only the third of the three categories I just laid out. That's one of the, the differences that you'll see in this policy. So, any request based on health, safety, and welfare of a child would still require a hearing. New entrance, including kindergarten new entrance, and I just want to clarify, that's families that have no older siblings in our elementary schools, just entering kindergarten for the first time as a family, who wish to request zoning exemptions, will do so in writing to the superintendent. If a child entering, is entering the fifth grade, when a family is moving, they'll be sort of automatically considered for that zoning exemption. The superintendent will then consult with family, administrators, teachers, staff in the buildings, and will consider several factors that include the educational, social, emotional needs of the student, the physical space, space constraints, some program considerations, and budget considerations. After that, he'll make a final determination, and then that decision will be made in writing to the parent. Other notable points in this revision are that, once a zoning decision is made, it's proposed that it be permanent, rather than families coming back year after year to ask for zoning exemptions. If a zoning exemption is made, either because they're moving, there's a health, safety, or welfare concern, or they're a new entrant opting for attendance in another school zone, those decisions will be permanent. Unless somebody wants to go back to the home zone, that's always available. But in terms of having to come back for an appeal every year, that's gone. A notice, there will be, there'll be no annual invitation to request a zoning exemption, there'll be no letter sent home to advertise zoning exemptions. But if someone enters the school for the first time inside their registration packet, it's proposed that just a short notice will go in describing the opportunity to avail themselves of a zoning exemption. And if the parents elect to send their child to a school outside their home zone, transportation, it's proposed that transportation will be provided, if it doesn't cost the district any more money, if it meets all the state and local guidelines, and it can be done without additional burden, time burden, on the children already on the route. So, overall, this revision, we think, simplifies the language considerably, it kind of streamlines zoning exemption requests, and allows us to provide some increased opportunities for families that want to avail themselves of these zoning exemption requests.
Thank you, Dr. Litt. We'll go through the regulation, 7160R, or you want to go with the policy first? Policy first. 7160. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns?
Just for consistency, because we have it in the regulation, I think the criteria should match, and in 7160, add enrollment as a bullet?
Yes, a couple of things. Second full paragraph, it says, "Families will be notified in writing of such decisions." I think we should put a, some sort of a time limitation as to when they should be notified?
Did we do that in the, in the, it's in the regulation?
Well, then, maybe just...
Should it show in the policy?
They're different, depending on the circumstance.
Yeah.
So, in the policy, maybe more in general terms...
And that's what I meant.
To look at the regulation, or to refer to it for timelines, or, because if somebody moves in the district mid-year, that decision would have to be made immediately, versus somebody who's coming into the district new, could be doing that six to eight months in advance of school starting.
Why don't we just say, no, no...
No later?
No later than whatever, however many days determined to be.
Within 10 days, or something?
Within 10 days.
We do that, within 10 days.
In, in the following paragraph, it's, let me just make sure, a, a child is in school A, and at the end of that particular, who is in school A, their home school, then the parents have it, it's approved that they can go to school B. At the end, they're going to be there, once they do that, they are required to be there for the, for the full extent of the year. If they want to move again, can they go to school C, or can they only go back to school A?
Has that ever, have you ever gotten that kind of request?
No, but I just, I, I'm just concerned that once...
School hopping.
School hopping.
That's, that's, school hopping. No, I, I saw when we discussed it, it was...
B or home?
B or home.
Yeah, but if, if there's a specific need for a child to, you know, I don't know what that need might be, and it, and it is approved by zoning, why, why would we stop that move?
Because it's only available when you're new to the district or you're moving. It's not, you don't, this is not, and every year you get another, that's...
Another, another, another...
But in zoning, if there's, if there's something specific that you, if you have an issue, a problem, or concern, you can approach the zoning in that, in that, in that faction.
That's totally separate? That's really, that's, that's item three, that you're talking more about a hearing, right? If we're looking at the three different scenarios, you're talking more about, I have a, I have an issue and my child needs to move, whereas versus the first two, which is, I'm new to the district, and I, I have a reason I want to go to a different school.
Okay.
And then, if it's a, if it's an, I have an issue and I have to move, I still think, you don't want, you don't want to encourage school hopping.
It's a, it's kind of an unlikely scenario, because usually, people request us to stay where they started, you know, when they're moving, or they've never really been anywhere else before. I mean, we got, very rare was the family that just moved to another school for the...
Can I, can I just make a comment on this? Our experience over the years has been that the over, underlying thought pattern of parents is continuity. They really want their children to continue with whatever the experience is at the location where their children are connected, rather than in fact, move them around the school district. And, you know, that's what we've, many of the cases that we have to deal with really have to do with the concerns a family have of leaving something with which their children are already familiar. I, I don't, I don't see it as being a real problem because of that. It's highly unlikely that that would happen. And I, and I would go back to, I think, I forget, Liz, maybe you said it before, that we've already established in the policy, pretty much, the ground rules for making changes. And it really has to do with those two conditions. The time at which somebody is new to the school district, or in fact, when they are moving. And that's about it. And I think, Mark, what you're introducing is another set of conditions, which were not contemplated and not really included in this.
I'm, like, again, my concern is that, you know, no, certainly no one here would do this, but there are parents who are going to say, oh, my child is going into third grade in this other school, I hear that potential teacher is what is best suited for him or her, and let me go into that school for, for third grade. Just something to consider.
Have you taken a position on that? Are you, are you suggesting something, or, and you're, are you asking a question, or you're, I'm not sure?
Well, it's a question and a, and a, and a comment in that it's, is it going, is it permissible, really, the question was, is it permissible to go from home school to school B, and the following year after that, you go to school C, or can you only go back to A?
I, getting back to something that was, Noreen, I, I think what you really need to be sensitive to is that we're trying to deal with this on a case-by-case-by-case basis. I wouldn't want to preclude anybody from making the request, and I'm not suggesting that, that we would be sympathetic to moves that were, as you are suggesting, trying to follow a, either a teacher, or, or develop a pattern of moving around the school district. We're not looking to do that at all, I don't think. That does not mean that there wouldn't be circumstances under which I could think that a parent, being very unhappy where they are, and for very good reasons, may have to request another move. But I think that the way in which you've written it, which is that it has to go through a process, I am involved in the decision, and then you say it very clearly in the, that the Board of Education is involved also. So, there's plenty of opportunity for people to screen this thing and to think it through very carefully before in fact, and as a matter of fact, to think it through in such a way that the consequences would be thought through as well. But I wouldn't rule it out as a possibility. And I think if you start building into the policy from the outset, these rules, these guidelines, and restrict it, you may be defeating the purpose of what it is that we're trying to accomplish, which is case by case by case.
Everybody okay? Was not anything? Anything else on the policy?
Age two, just want to just go over my notes again. The, under letter A, section A. If... If it lists there... If a child moves within... The family moves within the district and they petition to remain in their originating school, and there are certain circumstances, numbers one and two, do both conditions need to be met?
No, it's one or two.
It's not what it says, though?
Under the following circumstances. It's not or.
It should be.
It should be or.
It apparently... It looks like it did.
Or should be or. Or, yeah. Or somehow we should say that it's one of the... Yeah.
Either or both.
Well, I think the point was that if they're in their last year, they don't even... It's done. It's automatic.
Right.
If they're going into fifth grade, it's automatic. So.
The policy... This policy, which deals with zoning, doesn't address the cases of siblings. Now, we're not going to address that within this policy?
We say families of...
Families.
Families' home zone school.
Yeah. In one, two, third paragraph, the new school will be considered the...
Age one?
Age one. The last sentence of the third paragraph says, "The new school will be considered the family's home zone school."
I... Well, I don't... That could have unintended consequences. So is that then... Then the siblings become part of the determinate... Determining facts when someone applies for a zoning exemption?
In which scenario?
Well, if the new school is going to be considered the family's home zone school, that means that a child, a sibling, who is, say, not of school age at that point, will also be going to that school, even though the other child could be out of the school at that point.
Well, we were of the mindset of parents typically don't want to split their children. And once they start attending a school and feel that school connection that they would like to continue it, which was what we talked about with Dr. Leahy, instead of having to kind of plead their case year after year to be able to stay where they are, have already had that, that that would become their school.
If there's a greater-than-six-year separation between... Of ages between the children, one child will be going to that school, will have gone on to the middle school as the other one is coming into kindergarten.
You didn't want them to have to come before the zoning?
Well, this is not... This is saying...
This says no.
That new school is now considered the family's home zone school forever, while they live there.
They can choose to go back, right?
Right, but no. But they're giving the family the option to go there without ever appealing to, you know, to any zoning regulations. Why could we not have that in there and then not have unintended circumstances to what the policy is reading? And have it if Johnny comes up in three years? Have if they're, you know... If that need or desire or, you know, is there to appeal for a zoning?
They can always go back.
No, I'm just saying so that the new sibling would have to appeal... The parent would have to appeal for the zoning exemption and move the school at that point, as opposed to just giving it to the family.
I just can't imagine that scenario where now our child's in third grade and the new... The younger sibling's coming in, and we would say...
No.
No. I just can't imagine that scenario.
Yeah, you have to go to a different school. I think that was... We tend... Even in the old policy resolution, we kept families together. That's how families, you know... They don't want to have to split up if you say...
But like Mark says, in four years, you don't know what the circumstance will be in that school, and you have put yourself in some jeopardy there. Or you could be putting yourself in jeopardy at that point.
You know, you can set up a circumstance in language here where you say that you can specifically address the set of circumstances that Mark is describing and accept for and write it as an exception where all of the siblings are out except one coming in. They can be treated as a new student again. And the applicant... So in other words, what he's saying is that if there's seven years in between or six years in between children in a family, and that's not inconceivable. Again, no pun intended, but...
It could be four.
But, I mean, that's... Excuse me. But again, the idea of it, you can write that as an exception and say that, under that very special circumstance, you might have to reapply. In other words, if the older one is now gone and is in a middle school, does that mean that the children who are now coming through the system are also eligible to it? I mean, I don't see that as a real problem, but at the same time, we could always write it in as an exception.
They already have two choices. That those families, in that particular incident, already have two choices. They can go where their sibling went or they can go to their... Where they're zoned. So they already are ahead.
They had a third choice. They could petition to go to any other school.
But they wouldn't probably meet those requirements because they're not new entrants. So only new entrants or people who moved can go through this process for a zoning exemption based on this criteria. They would not be either. But they already have two choices versus somebody else who have kids the same age.
This would also... If Johnny was going to fifth grade and his family moved out of his home school and he stayed in the home school, the rest of the family could still go back to that home school.
You could always go back to the home school.
So the school that we let Johnny finish because the zoning exemption we gave to him so he could finish out school in his last year of his elementary, we gave it to him, but that also lets his whole family go, you know, go back to that original school as opposed to the school that they moved into.
But well, that was... See, that was... That's part of this, yes.
Right.
Yes. If they're in school there. If Johnny's in fifth grade and Sally's two.
Right.
Sally doesn't necessarily... And they move.
Right.
They don't get grandfathered in.
Well, that's... That would have to be in that wording. You're saying that's different than what Mark...
I think that's different than the fifth grader.
But it doesn't say that anywhere in the regulation. I didn't pick up on it. You know...
We can work on some language.
You're right to give special...
With zoning, we were very, you know, I guess, more... You know, we wanted to let that fifth grader stay in that school because they had their history there. I don't know that it needs to be the rest of the family. That fifth grader will be out of the school the next year. Why does it have to open up the door to the rest of the family if they're moving into another school area? I don't know that we need to give that to them.
Well, generally, in circumstances like that where there was someone... One of the children were entering fifth grade. And let's say there was a second grader and a third grader, right? So after that child finished fifth grade, then we would have had a third grader and a fourth grader. We would say to parents typically, "The approval for this year..." "We're approving this this year because your child's going into fifth grade. We want to take him out." But there's no guarantee the younger siblings will be able to stay beyond next year. And then it was the parent's decision to say, "Okay, I'll just move him now or I'll roll the dice and then come back." So I don't know if you want to put in some language about that. Younger siblings are prone to request in the following year. I don't know. Hardly... Never was there a circumstance where families said, you know... I shouldn't say never. There was a couple of circumstances where families moved the younger ones just to get them started. And then the fifth grader finished. There were a couple of circumstances like that. But generally, if we could, we just kept the family together for that year. And then in the following year, the younger siblings would go to the new school.
But in the way this is written, they don't have to leave. They'll just stay right there.
Right. It is written that way. So if we... Do you want to go back and put some language in that... Around that?
No, I thought we wrote this that way on purpose. I wonder about the two-year-old who hasn't started school. If they come to kindergarten and nobody's in that school, where do they go? We don't even really address that. I don't know. Do they go to the school where their siblings were in?
Well, that's why I was saying we could write a very brief statement and create an exception for a special circumstance where, as you just described it... You said it somewhat differently than Mark did, but it's essentially the same concept, which is that when all of the other children are out of that school and there's a new one coming in, is the school to which the first child moved the home school for the new child coming in? It's as if that's a brand-new...
You know, it's starting to get very complicated.
What?
It's starting to get very complicated. Maybe the solution could be, take out the sentence that says, "The new school will be considered the family's home zone school." So that if the sibling wants to... If the parents want the sibling who is just entering into that new school for the first time while their brother or sister is graduating, would have to petition. It makes the same rule for...
In the following year.
Well, when they enter. If they want to stay in the school where their sibling went, which is not their home zone school, then they would need to petition as well. Each set of circumstances stands alone.
When this was written, we tried to avoid that and allow them to stay without necessarily having the family go through with every one of their children a request to have their children considered.
That was when... I think we... Was that under the zoning portion or what we were discussing?
No, the zoning, right here.
This balance.
That was never the way it was in the original zoning. That's a change to the zoning. If you let an older sibling stay in a school, then you... The younger siblings don't automatically get to go there. The old way.
Right. No, no. When we used to hear this, it was child by child.
That's right. To that extent, this doesn't change. And we take every set of circumstances. We review why the request is made. Typically, when a family has a child entering fifth grade, if it didn't affect... Negatively affect the younger grades and younger siblings were still there, typically, the whole family would stay for that last year for that fifth grader and then move on. That's typically what would happen, rather than coming back to the zoning committee for another appeal.
And with this, the way you wrote the policy here, the way the policy came out, you wanted to eliminate that? Eliminate that family having to come back to you and ask...
Just in general, coming back every year when a decision is made.
I'm not saying every year. If they came back to you the next year after their older brother or sister graduated and requested that the third grader remain in the school and presented facts or, you know, whatever you needed documentation to do that. And once they were approved, then that third grader would have the opportunity to stay until fifth grade. Is that... You know, did you find a problem with that? And is that why you worded it this way?
Well, there was a lot of questions at the forum about siblings. And we tried to make it that there was a universal way to handle that so that we weren't putting kids in positions where they were going to be broken apart.
The attempt, I believe, was to make it more generous rather than restrictive.
Right.
So what I took from the forum was a lot of parents were concerned of the effect, maybe the possible negative effect of siblings following their older brother and sister without any control or look to... Because we can't tell what five years ahead is going to be in any one school and then what we may add for extra students from, you know, some... You know, from someone who we gave a zoning exemption to, you know, how many years ago. It's one thing to deal with the population in the community... Population at, say, Hewitt. But then to deal with a family that moved to the Wilson area who may be feeding into that district over how many years? You never know. Is, you know, is something that I don't know if we need to put a burden on that school.
I guess the... If you kind of just take the helicopter up another 1,000 feet, the question then, can a family select a home zone that's different than the zone in which they live? And if so, under what circum... When you say family, I mean one child and all their children.
Right. We're giving them the opportunity to do that here if they can present a case that one of their children has a need to be somewhere else, can't function here or doesn't... You know, we're giving them the opportunity to take the whole family and go somewhere else. Is that what we want to do? That's clearly the policy is writing. So that's where you wanted to go with the policy in the committee?
Again, if you think about it separately, you're talking about people that are already... If you take the people that are already in a school and are moving to another zone, we're already counting that whole family in that original school's numbers. So let them stay there does not affect enrollment in any way.
It does if they have younger children who aren't in the school
It does if they have, you know, younger children who aren't in the school that we're not counting, and they come up through the years and go, you know, then move to another school.
Right, so if you want to add language about the people who aren't there yet, that is different than siblings that are moving...
In, sort of, enrolled in school already.
Right. There is, there is differentiation in the policy. In general, I think we separated it out.
Because then it's almost like that new student coming in is like a new entrance, almost. If you have someone like a two-year-old and you have a fifth grader gone, no one's...
So then that, that language of the, that's their new home school wouldn't apply. It, it would have to be worded that it would just be for currently enrolled students. Are you comfortable? Because then we're not, you know, we're not, you know, we know where everything is for now, and it's not something in two years that's going to, could be completely different. Could be twins, could be triplets that we, you know, are now, I don't know. That's just my thought. Mark? Comfortable limiting it to that degree?
If, I'd like to see the language of that before I say comfortable, because I think the other solution would be to take out that sentence, as I said earlier, but I would be certainly open to seeing what language comes up.
What do you think, Nora?
Just something like zoning exemptions will be...
We'll have to go back to the drawing board and look at it.
Right. Will be considered for students currently enrolled, registered in this, in the school district.
Currently enrolled.
Students not enrolled...
I think we know what the issue is, we just have to figure out if there's language that can address it satisfactorily. It's not going to happen right now. I think we have to...
No, no, I understand. This is the same one, so...
No, no, I understand, well, it's...
So if that's added to that sentence, Mark, you're pretty good moving forward. Now, I'm not, I'm not binding it to anything.
Well, you can just say it.
Yeah, so we'll move to the regulation then? Are you, are you done on the, on the policy?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so 2160-R, regulation. Any questions, comments?
Yes? Under the fifth bullet, where it says budget considerations, parentheses, no additional cost to the district, do we want that on there?
Mark, it's on the policy.
It's on the policy.
It's on the policy.
But... Okay. Okay. Well, I mean, I'm fine with leaving it on, but...
No, I think...
Are you good?
Nothing to say.
A zoning exemption may require us to spend more money or do something different to accommodate the needs of a child. Not, you know, we may be put into a place where a student can't function somewhere for multitude of reasons, and moving them is a necessity, and it may incur costs. So if we leave that in there, aren't we trapping ourselves and leaving, okay, now, we know that you need to move, and we have a place for you to move, but we can't do it because it may cost us some money. Doesn't that pigeonhole us too much?
I think what we're trying to avoid is, again, that idea of, that this is creating school choice, so that we're not opening it up so much where people can just choose where to go, doesn't matter what the buses cost, it doesn't, you know, we have to take all those things into consideration, that they have to meet requirements and criteria to be considered for a zoning exemption. So we have to have limitations in place so that this does not become a school choice policy.
It also specifically, it doesn't, it says consideration will be made to some or all of the following, so we're not bound, so nobody has to like check off a single thing.
And it goes back to really giving that individual case...
Right.
Case by case matters, not just...
Yes.
Okay.
Because I do think it's very different if you've got a situation where someone's being bullied in a school and they're requesting a move versus, you know, this, versus I was here and I like it here and I want to stay here. Those are very different situations.
You know, you can write this differently by just saying, what you need to consider is its impact on the budget, rather than say no additional cost to the district.
No impact on the budget.
So we have to, we, we have to calculate its impact on the budget, if any. And that needs to be considered.
Do we want to reword it? Do we want to leave it?
Say budget implications?
I like the rewording.
I like a catch on budget.
I like the rewording.
Okay.
Which we should then...
So we're going to go back to the policy also?
And reword that to budget implications.
Yes.
Yeah.
On page two of the regulation, letter B, step two. If the family chooses to avail themselves, that, should there be a cutoff date?
Well, there's new entrants that come in all during the year.
Yeah, they could come in in January and have that, and they'll need that.
Step four, superintendent of schools will make a final determination. Is the superintendent's decision appealable?
Yes.
To the board?
Yes, it's in the last paragraph.
Have you responded?
Flip the, flip the page.
But, no, then this should be consistent.
Yeah, but it...
It says it at the end.
No, no, it's at the, it's at the end of the regulations, decisions.
How it works.
Can be appealed.
Right, but, okay. I, I had an issue with the word final, so...
We'll make a determination.
Final determination.
We'll make a determination.
Determination.
This is appealed.
Right. Okay.
We have copies of this out, out in the hall if you want to follow as we go along. All right. Anything else on the regulation?
Uh...
Wait, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes.
Step four, we're taking out final.
Taking out the word final?
Yes, superintendent making a determination.
Step, uh, page, I'm sorry.
And by the way, could we just introduce 10 workdays?
Ah, okay.
10 calendar days could be really a problem.
Yeah, for Christmas.
And, and second bullet under step four.
What does that mean?
I think that goes back to the policy.
10 school days?
Does it?
Or school days, yeah.
Should be school days.
Hello, no.
By me? It's a difference.
Workdays and school days.
Business days?
School days.
School days?
As if it's, what happens if it's over the summer?
Summer, yeah, it's got to be work days.
Business days?
Yeah, it would be, it should be school days.
But our business days. And what happens over the summer?
Someone else's business days.
For a second.
Christmas vacation people.
Work days, yes. Dr. Johnson said it should be work days.
Yeah, what is, work days, yeah, all right, yeah.
School work days.
The district's work days.
On page three, last sentence of the paragraph, five school days after the first Board of Education meeting scheduled. I believe it should be regularly scheduled, not just, so, the first Board of Education meeting regularly scheduled and held after receipt of, so, so, otherwise...
Oh, we have a special meeting?
That's, that's what your, it would, uh, we don't need to call a special meeting to do it.
Okay.
First thing, and that paragraph, are we changing those school days to work days as well?
Oh. No. Um, I'm, Senator, there's only been five school days after the first Board of Ed... I don't know. If it's our workdays, we only work two days a month.
I was going to say, when do we work?
We don't work, we're here. I heard that earlier.
I heard that, too.
Yeah, and also what, what happens in the summer there, too, then?
Five days.
I think it has to be work...
I think it has to match, I think it has to be...
It has to be, yeah, it has to match, so it has to be work days. And then I'm putting in regularly scheduled for it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Five workdays after the first Board of Educat... the first Board of Education regularly scheduled meeting?
Regularly.
Or meeting regularly scheduled?
How about the first regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting?
Moving on to the 71, 7160 notice.
You want to do it? Notify, request submitted to, submitted, must be submitted in writing to the superintendent of schools. It should be a generic submission to the superintendent of schools, as well as the email.
Sheppard Street, too.
Yes, yes, Sheppard, Sheppard, Sheppard.
The Sheppard School.
Sheppard School.
Sheppard School.
Probably knows where it went up, I don't know.
We all missed that one.
That is funny.
I can't believe I missed that.
That's, that's pretty funny.
How many, everybody? Do we not, we usually don't have any specificity in a policy, right?
No, it should not be.
It should be generic.
Yes, as well as the email address, come up with a...
Is there such an email address as superintendent at Rappel Center Schools?
Easy enough to make.
All right, Jackie, you have another task, make a generic email address. And then you have to answer it, too.
Yeah, exactly.
He's going to get it.
You are.
Exactly, he's going to get it.
All right. Good? Before we move on to the next policy, I'd like to open the mic to anybody in the public who wants to speak specifically about what's on these...
Are we moving this to, to, what are you doing?
Let's let, we'll, we'll open it up to the mic and we'll, we'll see. Anybody who has anything that want, they want to bring forward about the three pages of 7160, please come forward, leave your, you know, give your name and address.
Hi, Katie Conlin, 63 Broadway. I am, I kind of feel like this is a backdoor to class balancing with this being offered to new entrants to the district, and I will just reiterate what I said at the last meeting, and it was brought up briefly here, is that you have no way to account for the younger siblings and what you're doing to those classes when they get to the school, that you're guaranteeing them, and it's not fair to the people who are zoned for that school to be dealing with larger than otherwise needed, sorry, I'm going to move the, class sizes, because you're allowing a family, like, I don't understand why this zoning exemption is even being offered to new entrants, other than it being a backdoor to class balancing, like a loophole that you're kind of trying to avoid the controversy and the discussion of that. Why is this zoning exemption being offered to new entrants?
Well, we didn't create a loophole. What we tried to do is not separate class balancing as something separate from placement of children, so it's another option, which is what we said that 7159 was supposed to be, it was supposed to be an opportunity, and based off of certain criteria, which we tried to remove specific numbers, because that's not the only reason why classes become unbalanced. There's other factors, we talked about building constraints and, you know, budgetary restrictions and things like that, so this is merged in as another opportunity for people to move schools. If, in the case of last year, students wanted to go to another school and met this criteria, they would typically have to go to Dr. Leahy and produce some sort of evidence of why they should be considered, but if we have room in buildings and the enrollment and the building constraints are right, then this is an opportunity for them to take advantage of that zoning exemption.
Correct, but you're still not, and I brought this up at many meetings, including the last meeting, you have nothing written here that will account for what you're doing to future class sizes of kids who are not yet in the district.
But we, that language, we just changed it.
No, I know, I know.
We will, we'll let, if three, three siblings are in a school and they want to stay there, say, fifth grade, however, whatever it is, no other new siblings will be, so they're already in the numbers of the school.
Right.
So in that way, we will protect the future of the school and not let their younger brothers and sisters come into the school without, you know, without going for a zoning exemption.
Okay, because, you know, I think case in point, and I know I asked this question in the past, but out of the kindergarten and first grade at Wilson right now, how many of those kids are siblings of kids that are there because of class balancing? You've told me none, but I've heard specifically from people that that's not the case, that there are kids in those classes.
I'd be glad to share the information of names privately at any time to show you.
I wasn't given the names.
There are not, not none. I, I'm, I'm sitting here trying to figure out whether or not you can really say with definity that either unborn siblings or much younger siblings would have a negative impact on that particular class. I'm not sure you can say that with assurity. I mean, it's, it's one of these things, you really don't know, it could be that, that it helps that they didn't go to a different school. I think it's, it's something that's a little bit difficult to predict, especially so many years younger. It's just been the circumstance so far with what the four years we've been doing this, that we have not run into that problem with the younger siblings, so far.
Well, I, I, I heard differently from Wilson parents, that there are kids, and I don't know if it was kindergarten or first grade, that are siblings that are there because of class balancing, and I would say that negatively impacted that whole school because they lost their, their art room and, and they're now out in a portable, so I just think that it's a very short-sighted plan without putting into some, you know, specific accounts for the younger siblings who aren't yet in the school district, because it's not fair for the kids that are zoned for that school already to have to now deal with a few extra kids when they didn't need to.
Just has not been the case in, in our, our current circumstances yet. Could always, could be, but it just hasn't happened yet.
But that's, that's why we asked, so look at that, we don't look for that language. Anybody else?
Hi, Jackie Cahill, 87 Windsor Avenue. I mean, my concern, I, I agree with Katie Conlin, is it does feel like this is a much more general way of allowing a lot of the same things that were allowed in the past. There's nothing in here that would prevent, I got involved with this two years ago, my son goes to Riverside, and the situation then was we had an enrollment of 27, and a few students who were at the Avalon were nudged by administration to take the opportunity to avail themselves of this policy, those were the words, and they were going to go there, and it, it put Riverside in a really bad place, and there's nothing in here to prevent that from happening again. There was a question at the last meeting as to why do Riverside's numbers fluctuate more? It's because our zoning has a much higher percentage of rental properties, including the Avalon, so we are a much more transient population, people are less connected to the school, and there's nothing in this policy to prevent something like that from happening again. They can see Watson from outside their window, we need those kids. I, I still think it allows situations where there is the engineering of larger overcrowded classrooms, which I think especially at the younger grades in kindergarten, we need to do everything we can to safeguard against.
We, that's why the board, you know, the board has an oversight, the superintendent has an oversight to, to look at all these issues there, you know, and make sure that the guidelines and the criteria are followed for the zoning.
But I think there's a little bit of a conflict of interest when you're thinking about kindergarteners and, oh, if we have one or two go over there and we can get the number down to 26 and then just have one class, that might be better for the budget, but for four and five-year-olds coming into the school, it, it's much worse off for them and for their education, so it's tricky, and this does not safeguard against that happening.
One thing I think that we try to address in every revision going forward, not going backwards, is that there's no invitation to anybody in the district.
There is an invitation, because it's going to be in the registration packets.
To new entrants.
Okay, but my point is, we're not saying, like we did in the past, hey, you can go to blank school because there's room for you. There are reasons people apply for things like this that have nothing to do with numbers at all, and we're trying to make that criteria a little bit broader. So for, as an example, there might be a child that's a new entrant coming from another part of the state, is zoned for school A, but their caregiver or one person they know in town is in school B, and they might appeal to us for that reason, having nothing to do with numbers. If they went through a zoning exemption, then we would have to take a look at, okay, well, we can't just let them go there because it's convenient for them, but what do the numbers look like, and how does that impact us overall to let them make that move? So what we've tried to do is, again, just like in the other revisions, is offer opportunity for students and families in the district and trying to focus on what's best for the child first, instead of playing numbers, and I think that's what you're concerned about, we're not trying to play a numbers game as much as we're in this, trying to take children into consideration and families and what's best for them.
In the forum a couple of weeks ago, it was brought up that this policy benefits the minority of students that choose to make a change at the expense of the majority of the students that choose to stay in their school, and there is nothing in this policy that, again, safeguards those students that decide to stay. If there's an invitation in the registration packet and there's nothing in the policy that prevents a phone call from an administrator or something when you're trying to get the numbers down a little bit so that you can save a class, there's, there's nothing in here that safeguards that, that safeguards the majority of the students that want to stay at their zoned school where there is hopefully, and again, my kids go to a school where we're always on the cusp of one versus two classes, and sometimes you have the numbers for one, and, and that happens, but two is so much more beneficial for the kids, especially when you're talking about, when you're talking about the entering students, you're mostly talking about kindergarteners, you're talking about four and five-year-olds. We should not be comfortable with the idea that, that they are in class sizes of 25 students, and we shouldn't be having policies where it is possible to engineer a situation where, where that's being created, basically.
We are trying, with, with this policy, we're trying to get, we're trying to make it a case by case, so a parent would have to appeal to, appeal to Noreen, appeal to the board, appeal to the superintendent, and rather than just saying, okay, numbers, here's the numbers, if the numbers fall, you know, we can move around and do that. This is, this is a case by case.
To almost...
This is our attempt to safeguard against just the, or to eliminate the mass exit from a school, or if the numbers fall in place.
Right.
We're trying to give the opportunity, one student at a time, if they feel they need to move for a, a number of reasons, the opportunity to move.
And I appreciate that, and I think it's great. My, my concern is that there's always going to be the conflict of interest of, well, if, if we can get two students to switch, then we can save a teacher's salary and, and the conflict of interest regarding the budget constraints, and I understand that, that budgetary should be one of the things that you're considering when you're looking at, at everything, but the idea of trying to, I, I think you more want the budgetary constraints in terms of how much is it going to cost to send this student to another school, and not how much money can we save by sending this student to another school.
One thing, too, should be noted, that the new entrants that come in are new entrants that move in, would, they come in throughout the year, and then the new kindergarten are families new to the district, like no, no older siblings, so it, it limits the, it's not, it's not a mass invitation to anybody in the, entering kindergarten class, but just kindergarten entrants that don't have older siblings. It's also a parent request, there is no mechanism to send an invitation... There is no mechanism to send an invitation. Nobody's going to be looking for people. It'll be a non-event, so to speak, until someone comes to us and says, we request that we are moving from, you know, Covert to Wilson. And there's all a variety of reasons. I mean, my, I have a child that is, takes, is medically fragile, and my mother lives across the street from the school, and she's retired and she can take care of him if something happens. I have, sometimes it's babysitting, sometimes, it's all different reasons people come forward. To this point, we've been somewhat rigid in those movements for those reasons. And now we're trying to say, hey, there may be circumstances where we need to divert from those boundaries. But there's really, we'll be kind of standing by, waiting. If somebody wants to make that request, Dr. Johnson will receive the request, ask me to gather some information, and make a decision on it. So I think it's different than some vision of us looking through and trying to figure out names of people to coerce or bring to one school or the other. It's really an opportunity for families that feel they need to make this request. Am I explaining that?
And I think that you need to look at exactly, it's a request, and also it could be a safeguard for the class too. Don't forget, it's a request. We still have the ability to deny the request.
That's right.
So if we want to safeguard a school from having a class issue, we can also do that as well. So you have to look at it that way as well. Do you understand what I mean?
Yeah.
So it's the opposite of what you're saying. Actually, the decision could be made to safeguard schools, not to harm schools, or not to harm, in the way, you know, in the way that people might look at it. Also, I think there is the question around number. And that is a good question, you know, is there a hard, fast number? 25 keeps coming up, 26, 27. I mean, there's a lot of numbers that have been discussed. What is a number?
That number is a topic, a totally different topic for another day. We will, we will go into class size. We will have a discussion about that, but that's something we can't, we're not going to, we don't have the time to talk about now.
No.
We're not even prepared to talk about that now.
And I-
So we'll go there in the near future.
Yeah, no, and I think it's great that you want to open it up to considering more extenuating circumstances. I think that kind of flexibility is wonderful. I mean, you'll have to just pardon my cynicism here though, because when you talk about safeguards and stuff, in my experience, it has not worked that way. It has not worked.
That's, that's why we're trying to move forward, we're trying to make a better, stronger policy. You know, we're going in that direction. That's where we're going.
And you say you're going to also put notifications in the registration packet. So a letter isn't going to go out, but if there's a notification in the registration packet, isn't that kind of the same thing?
It's different insofar as the letter said, if you are in Covert's kindergarten and 3rd grade, you're eligible to move to Riverside's kindergarten and 3rd grade. It specifically said you can move from here to here. This, if you read the notice, the language is very general. Just basically says, we have this policy that allows for some exemptions under certain circumstances. That's all it says. It doesn't mention anything about, anything.
It's very different from the letter.
It's difficult to everybody in the district.
I understand, not everybody who applies for this will get it. It's not something, it's, we're just trying to, we're just trying to afford the students in the district that need it, the opportunity to have it.
I think that's great, but I also agree with Katie that it sort of feels like a loophole, so. Thank you.
Anybody else? No? All right, we'll keep, we'll move to stage two. We'll get the change in language, and we'll review it again on our next meeting. Our next meeting. I'm sorry, I was trying to figure out what we were doing. We're going to move to stage two. We'll discuss it, our Public Works next, our Public Works meeting next in two weeks. And then it'll, we'll see, if it moves forward, it may be at 3:00 at the next board meeting, where we'll have open discussion again, and we'll let you come forward at that point. We'll refine the language from now till the next meeting and then possibly again. Okay, we're moving to Policy 5660, School Food Service Program, Lunch and Breakfast. We've made the changes because-
Bringing the regulations?
The regulations.
New regulations.
And our particular policy for charge meals.
How, the regulations are state or federal?
Federal.
And is this, are these new changes in federal policy?
No, it's just bringing our policy into compliance, they've been there.
So we only allow students to charge up to three, three meals, and then, and then what happens?
And then we have letters going, we have letters going out when they have low balances, but letters going to parents that they need to increase the funds, increase their balances. If students continue to come to school without monies in their accounts, we still provide them with a-
Cheese sandwich.
Very basic lunch, just so they don't go hungry.
You can't charge alacard snacks?
Not if they don't have money.
If they don't have money, yeah. Okay.
That kind of makes sense. Can't buy ice cream. How often do we contact social services to report a student's consistent failure to arrive with a meal? And is this setting up a parents versus school? Like, is this, is this like putting us in the middle of?
I'm not aware of any time that we've notified them, that would be done at the school level.
We will continue to feed, no matter what.
Yes, absolutely.
That's, that's what we have to do. That's the most important.
Do we have a large problem with unpaid meal charges?
No.
It happens once, they have the cheese sandwich, and it never goes short again.
I was going to say, you could use my leftover money from my kids. I have automatic repay online.
My kids automatically refill the car.
Cheese.
I have automatic repay.
Any other questions on the policy?
Yes. Page three, under Food Substitutions for Children with Disabilities, in the red portion. Second line towards the end, at the end, it says, to the general student body. We're talking about meal service is normally, not normally available to the general student body. Are we, does, when it makes reference to the general student body, does that also include Project Great, even though it's a children with disability issue?
No, this has nothing to do with Project Great.
Okay. There was, we had gotten a notice today from NYSER, our insurance carrier, about a Supreme Court case that was just decided, Andrew, Andrew to be Douglas County School District, that starts going into students with IEPs and what we're allowed to do and not allowed to do. I guess it's a brand-new thing. So I would just suggest that we, you probably have this, take a look at that and see if there's anything in there that's relevant to our particular needs.
Anything else?
I just had a question, Robert. On the school food service, on page three, restriction of sweetened foods in schools, the sale of sweetened foods, that category. What happens to, especially elementary schools who have Ice Cream Day or things like that?
It's kind of a technicality. It's kind of outside the school lunch program.
Because it's PTA-driven?
Right.
So that's not going, this is not going to impact those PTAs?
Some districts have taken it that far that it does.
My kids would be devastated.
They won't serve, they won't let anything, any sweet be served or sold or anything like that. I mean, we try to restrict it, like in the high school, we try to make sure that it's not sold until after 7:00 here, 1:00.
No bake sales until 1:00.
Right, bake sales.
But they always seem like they start a little earlier.
A few minutes.
You've got to catch that, you've got to catch that lunch crowd to make the big money. In time, it'll probably affect us that way.
If we had an outside vendor, it would be a whole different story.
Right, right.
Because it's our, it's our food service, we are much more flexible.
Right.
Okay, 5660 regulation? Oh, you're not done with the-
No, I'm done with the policy.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were-
Under regulation, under designated official, we will designate a reviewing official, hearing official, verification official, and a school lunch director.
Robert Bartels.
No, it says that some of them, I think, can't be the same.
That's correct.
So who's who?
The reviewing official is the school lunch director, that's-
Will be, okay, who is?
Who is Beth.
So Beth, Beth would qualify, she's not a, okay.
She's a director.
She's, I thought she was-
She's the school lunch director.
Okay.
No, she's not outside, she's-
Okay.
The verification official is Rosemary, my back. She verifies everybody.
Okay.
The reviewing person would be the Marion Friedman or myself.
Well-
No, you mean the hearing official.
The hearing official.
Okay. These changes came about because of changes in federal law again?
Yep.
Yes, just bringing our policy into compliance with federal law.
But not necessarily recent federal law?
No.
On page two, under eligibility process, where we've taken, SNAP has taken the place of the food stamp program and temporary assistance?
Yes.
No, so, so it's, it's not because of any changes in federal funding?
No.
Okay. Number five, where it says at least three times per school year that we're supposed to do the DMCP process?
Yes.
Why do they need more than three times?
They want us to continue to check if families-
So, but three times, it's like every, it seems excessive. There, it is.
Yes.
Okay, we agree.
Yes, we agree.
You mean the government doesn't want us to be-
Okay.
All right, we'll move to stage two. All right, we are at opportunity for superintendent.
I'll postpone till next time, I'll pass.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Yeah, we're getting late. Mr. Mason?
I'll save it. I've got all my things to go over, but I'll save it for next time.
Mrs. Deion?
All right, I'll speak quickly. I want to thank Dr. Leahy and Carol Rosetto for the fitness walk and the very long name of it. It was a fabulous event, as it has been for many years. Interestingly, somebody, a friend of mine, I was, I was walking, actually, I wasn't walking, I was standing, I admit it.
You were standing and talking.
I was standing and talking.
I walked the track.
And said, you know, do you think, do you think this makes any difference for our kids? And I said, I don't know, but I think we have to do it because we constantly have to remind them that this threat is real and kids, our kids are using alcohol and smoking cigarettes and using drugs, and we have to remind them that they shouldn't be doing that, so.
Smoking cigarettes.
And, you know, and it's a really great fun way to do that.
It is, and it's a, it's an event that's building every year. We met this morning to talk about it and start planning for next year. And switch it up a little bit so that there's more activities, specific activities for especially younger kids. The phys ed teachers are going to come in and run some fitness activities. But the point is, it really highlights the resources available in this community, which is a protective factor whenever we do a survey with the kids, our community and the resources available. So families need to know that there are other ways, alternatives for them and for their families, so, thank you. It's a fun, fun day. And also, I do have to acknowledge Ms. Lamb, Ms. Gamble, a social worker at the high school, and Ms. Algeriovento, who were very instrumental and organized in the day.
So there's that, and I hope everybody comes to homecoming on the 28th. Should be a fun event here. Walking down Long Beach Road.
Want to say something? Oh, yes. Sorry, I came in a little late. I was running parent-teacher conferences at my school in Mesa Pico, so thank you for letting me jump right in. And I wanted to say thank you to the board members and to the administrators for working on this policy, for class balancing, zoning. It's not an easy one, there's a lot of thoughts about it. I think we still have a way to go with working on it and some wording, but I think that we're moving in the right direction. I really thank everyone for putting a lot of effort and time into it, so, thank you. Thank you for the community for being here.
This is the list of thank yous. First of all, to all the parents who came to the forum. That really did help us a lot and try to streamline all of our thoughts. I wanted to thank Katie Schumacher and Detective DeLuca for putting on a great social media forum. The link will be sent out to all the PTA presidents to send to their units. Very scary but informative, good information. And thank you to Robert because we can tell that the air conditioning definitely works in this place. It is so cold.
I'm going to save it, we shall-
So cold. Congratulations to all the National Merit Scholarship students that were here earlier, and a really big thank you to Dr. Zouar and the choir because they put on a beautiful performance earlier that if you didn't get to see, you really should watch because I was in tears, it was beautiful. So I just want to say thank you for that.
And thank you to the PTAs for providing the treat.
Yes.
I forgot to.
We are, as I said, we are extremely grateful for our PTAs, and we appreciate that you do this for us this time of year. I want to remind, this Friday night is Friday Night Lights football here at Southside. Next Saturday, the 28th, is the homecoming game at 2:00, but we do have a parade through town, which is a lot of fun. Be great to see people on the streets. The parade starts at 12:00 on the corner of Sunrise Highway and Long Beach Road. We walk down Long Beach Road with all the floats from the school, so it's, you know, it's a really fun thing. Kids typically love it. Game is at 2:00 that day. I'd like to wish everybody a very happy and safe Halloween, we won't be before that. Our next meeting is a public works meeting, Thursday, November 2nd, in the boardroom, and, okay, and our next, then our next board meeting. And I'd like to keep, everybody keep this date open. The high school open house is Wednesday, November 8th, from 7:00 to 8:30. It's a great opportunity to come through the school, you meet a lot of students, you meet the teachers, and just to walk through and see what this high school's all about. I believe I have it all. Thank you very much for coming. We wish-
Opportunity for visitors.
What? We have opportunity for visitors now. I wasn't going to begin, we still have, we said-
Good evening, my name's Elizabeth Locata. I reside at 195 Hemstead Avenue. I have been involved with SEPTA/SEP for over seven years. As a former SEP president and an active member of SEP, Mary Ann and I are here tonight to advocate for the special needs community. As a community consisting of parents, teachers, administration, and you, the Board of Ed, we need to work together to have the same goal, which is to provide all of our students with an opportunity to succeed to their highest potential. Not every school in this district is on the same page when it comes to the special needs population, and there is always room for an improvement across the board. We don't want children slipping through the cracks or barely getting by. It doesn't matter if we're talking about 50 children or just one. If a child's needs are not being met, we are not- If a child's needs are not being met, we are not doing our job as a community. We currently exist in a world where our education system is forever changing and evolving, and unfortunately, not always for the best, and this is a very scary phenomenon for parents and educators. We, we are encountering more and more children every day that need support and remediation than the traditional educational environment can provide. So I ask you tonight to please think about how you would feel to watch your child, day in and day out, struggle and have no control over the situation, other than to be their voice, their support, and most importantly, their advocate. I feel a great responsibility to advocate on behalf of the entire special needs community because of my many years of involvement. There are many other families here in support as well. We are hoping for your support to hear us and to work with us. We look forward to coming before you each month with hope, motivation, and desire for change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Liz. Hello, I'm Mary Ann Peterson. I reside at 407 Hempstead Avenue in Rockville Center. I've been a member of SEP since my son was in kindergarten, he's now in the 10th grade here at the high school. I think, Dr. Johnson, you started by saying that the Board of, Board of Education here is here to serve the children, the students of this community. We at SEP believe that the insight and corroboration of the Board of Ed is now needed and required with respect to the needs of our special need community. We are here to ask that we work together, that we be able to sit down, have a meeting, and begin a, a regular conversation, and regular, we mean hopefully monthly, to address some of the concerns that our parents have and that we have with respect to our children, our class settings. We've tried, and we haven't made much progress. So we're hoping that by including the Board of Ed in this, there'll be another layer to help basically address our areas of concern and come up with new, new realistic and practical solutions, which we haven't been able to achieve as of this date. So we look forward to meeting with you, and we appreciate the opportunity.
Are you, are you, are you looking to meet with Dr. Johnson?
We're meet, we're looking to meet with Dr. Johnson, but we're also, we, we would like members of the Board of Ed. We've met with the administration before, not with, necessarily with Dr. Johnson, but we haven't made the type of progress, and we have many members that are very frustrated. And we feel we need another layer of corroboration and someone else to, to hear us, to be able to make the progress that we haven't been able to make.
I would just like to comment on that. There are several parents that have met with various members, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Leahy, everybody. But on a whole, as SEP representing the special needs community and helping to be their voice, we're looking to expand who we address, who we speak to, and try to make some progress.
And maybe that could be in the form of a, a meeting with very, with, with all of us at the table, to be, to be able to lay down the issues that we've had, that we haven't been able to address, and maybe Dr. Johnson knows this one, maybe he doesn't, but maybe we could all sit down at the same table and begin to lay down and, and, and talk to each other as, as, you know, working together for the best of our children, that's really the goal here, and then meet regularly to see how we're, we can make some progress on these issues, not just simply meet once. We're looking for an ongoing new path to a better end.
Dr. Johnson?
We haven't met, so I don't-
I met you years ago, but, yeah.
I know who you are, but we haven't had a meeting, so I don't know-
Right, no.
I don't know what the issues are, so.
I'm sorry, I met, I've met with Noreen, we probably speak very often, and she's awesome, but we haven't made some progress, and we have a lot of parent concerns. I don't, I would presume, I presumed you, you were aware of them, but I think it would be best if we just, we also met with members of the Board of Ed at, at a meeting so that we could really begin to, to break through. We've been in a standstill for over a year on some very pivotal issues for our community, and nobody seems to-
Can you give us an example of one?
Well, I'd rather, I'd rather do it at the, at the meeting if we can, because I don't think it's appropriate to, to start to-
Because we would run the risk of then potentially talking about specific students and specific families and specific scenarios, so.
It would be inappropriate.
Yeah.
Putting to the guidelines of this meeting, so.
Fine.
Okay.
If you can call, if you can call the office, and we'll, Dr. Johnson will try and set up a quiet with you.
With, with members of the Board of Ed, we would, we would hope as well. Tara, would you, I know you're the special ed, would you please come?
Of course.
That would be awesome.
All right. We'll, we'll talk about it in exec, and then we'll, you know, if you would call, then we'll, we'll try and set something up, we'll see.
That sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to the mic. Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to business.
We can do it by acclamation?
We're still doing minutes and things like that first.
What?
We changed the beginning of the meeting.
You can do the whole thing.
Oh, we can?
Why not?
Jackie, you're the boss.
What?
You're the boss, we can?
Yes.
Just accept the whole thing.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the whole thing? Can I have a motion to accept the minutes, receipt, approval of the financial reports, receipt of the financial reports? And motion to accept items A through C?
And agenda.
And agenda. Agenda.
Addenda.
Addenda, I'm sorry. This language is-
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to retire and to execute session to discuss personal and contractual matters?
So moved.
And a second.
All, any questions? No? All in favor? There's no questions on that one. Thank you very much for coming.
Can we do something about the temperature?
Yes, Robert, I think next time we either need to wear our winter parka, but next, next meeting it'll probably be 98 degrees in here.
Yeah, I know, but definitely wish for-
And I'm going to be wearing a sweater.